I want to call to order this meeting. It's about 6:02. This is a hybrid meeting, which means it's in person as well as Zoom. Two of the selectmen members are in person. Selectman Hull is present. Ken Pacheco. And the Zoom is Dr. Zagrafas. Can you acknowledge that you're here? Brett?
Hi, I'm president and I am part of this meeting.
So this meeting is being recorded. It should be live on Channel 9. It's going to be uploaded also on YouTube. And our next meeting, scheduled meeting is July 28th, 21 at 6:00 PM. We will be going into executive session and we will be reconvening. So maybe, maybe 20 minutes, maybe a little long, a little less. We'll be in executive session, then we're going to come back and have our regular meeting. So I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, "To Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparations for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel." And we also will, A, talk town account and contract negotiations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Aye.
Roll call, Dr. Z.
Aye.
Ken Pacheco is also an aye. And like I said before, we will reconvene back into open session. So we're back in open session. It's 6:37. I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Since our last meeting, following Dyton residents have passed, I ask that we remember them with a moment of silence. Helen Anunziato is 85 years old from North Dyton. She was a very active member of St. Joseph and St. Nicholas Church. Ronald Acosta was 88 of North Dyton, an Air Force veteran of the Korean War. William Welch was 63 years of age. He was a member of the U.S. Coast Guard and also served as a custodian at Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School before earning his teaching degree and several education posts in the Berkeley School System, including vice principal. And Jessie J. Rodriguez, she was 98 years old and was a seamstress most of her life. I ask that we remember them for the moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as I announced earlier, this is a hybrid meeting. It's Zoom as well as cable. It's live on Channel 9. It will be uploaded to YouTube. And Dr. Z, who was on Zoom before, when we started the meeting, is present.
I am.
And all my colleagues are present, in person. So we have several appointments. The first one is Zachary Blake, Division of Local Services. Is he?
So yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe Mr. Blake was supposed to be on Zoom. I don't, I'm actually see, I am listed. I did email him this afternoon. But if we want, if we don't, excuse me, if we want to table this till later in the meeting, we are visited and we can move into that later.
I'll entertain a motion to table this to be heard later on in the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is also an aye. The next item, sometimes we have some, the board of selectmen have to discuss some boring things during the night. Before I became a selectman, I used to put the selectmen's meetings on when I was ready to go to sleep. But this is very exciting. We have a certificate of achievement from the Board of Selectmen. Certificate of achievement. We, the undersigned, do hereby proudly present this certificate of achievement to the Dyton Rehoboth Girls Softball Team in recognition of their exceptional efforts and achievements in winning the Division II State Semifinals. Congratulations, you have made Dyton proud. It winners whereof, we have here on two, set our hands and cast a great seal of the Town of Dyton to be affixed on this 14th day of July 2021. It is signed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, Ken Pacheco, the chairman, Selectman Hull, the clerk, and Dr. Zagrafas, who was a member of the Board of Selectmen. So we are very proud of you. I know you didn't make it all the way, but you did great and you, you really made Dyton proud. A lot of us have followed it and it's always next year, but we are very pleased and happy with what you've done. Is there somebody who wishes to speak from the softball team? So I would like all the members of the team to identify themselves so that Dyton residents can, can know and speak loudly because the microphones are up here and the public may not see you. So how does everybody feel about that? I'll start with the person who's laughing.
I'm Maliano Reposo.
I'm Kylie Greavy.
I'm Emily Marcock.
I'm Kaylee Kuden.
I'm Corinne Braga.
I'm Kylie Gillian.
I'm Maddie Killen.
I'm Grace Sullivan.
I'm Morgan Corey.
I'm Nicole Corde.
And are any of the coaches here?
We're all here.
We're all here? Why don't we identify ourselves?
I'm Stephanie Colucci.
Katie Holmes.
Sarah Tindall.
Danielle Holmes.
Well, we are so proud of you. I'm going to give this certificate to someone. Who's the, should I give it to? So you have a choice. You can stay for the rest of the meeting. We have to be out of here by 11:00. So just to give you an idea as to how long this meeting could go on, we have to be out of here by 11:00. But feel free to, to leave. I mean, we obviously appreciate everything you've done for the Town of Dyton and Rehoboth and we're so proud of you and I'm glad that this was brought to our attention. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Good work.
Do you want to get a picture with you guys?
Absolutely.
Going down there or?
Yeah.
We can go down there.
No, they should come up here.
You can, you can come up here. Yeah, just don't go that way. No, it's a cable that way. So everybody.
Go this way.
Don't go that way.
Karen, excuse me, this is Brady.
So you're going to, you're going to stand here. I'm going to hand you this and I'm going to shake your hand. So this is about ready?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to be here about five minutes. You know, there's a lot of pictures that are to take. So just to see you smiling.
Keep shaking hands.
We're going.
We're going. I don't know, I don't know whose hand's sweating. It's me or you or both.
I love it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't go that way, there's a cord.
Yeah, there's a cord. You've got to go this way unfortunately. Zachary Blake isn't present yet, is he?
No, he's not, Mr. Chairman.
So the next item is a proclamation for the Parks and Recreation. Whereas Park and Recreation, we have the chairman of the Parks and Recreation, Kevin Smith, Jr., present. Parks and, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout the country and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled and whereas park and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values and whereas park and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors and whereas the Town of Dyton recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources and now therefore we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, do hereby recognize the month of July 2021 as Park and Recreation Month and urge all the citizens of the Town of Dyton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in the observance. It's time for the chairman, Ken Pacheco, the clerk, Leonard Hull, Selectman Leonard Hull, and Selectman Dr. Zagrafas, member of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation as presented this evening.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I just want to say you had a great event this past Saturday. I know that you and Sue Cody worked very hard on this. I saw you early in the morning, out there, you and Sue out there in the morning. You worked all day and you were probably the last people leaving that day, but it was, it was nice to see so much of the public come out, so many of the kids that involved in the different events that were going on, the touch a truck and the police cruisers being there. Thank you chief for doing that. And all the committee and commissions from the town that were present and were willing to talk to the public about different opportunities that they may have in the town. I also want to congratulate my colleagues for participating in the dunking of the selectmen. Just want to acknowledge that they put pressure on me to participate. I believe Dr. Z was the first one to agree to it and then Selectman Hull was the second one to put a little bit of pressure on me and being the, the old man of this group that's sitting up here. I had some hesitancy and I still have some pain and soreness from it, but it was a great event and I just want to throw out to my grandson, who wasn't able to get the ball at the target but was given permission to hit the, the thing, was very happy. He did apologize, said, "I'm sorry, grandpa," and then he hit it and I went in the water. So that was probably a great moment for me to have that, my grandson participate in that. So it was just a great event and I look forward to it happening again next year and the years to come. I just think it was a great event. I mean, other comments that people want to make about the fact, I know you, you two were there obviously and we had our booth, although there was so much stuff going on, I really didn't, wasn't at the booth for about more than five minutes, I don't think. I was just walking around. We were all part of different committees and different groups.
A couple of residents did come up to me to talk about, just like different things going on in town and share ideas, thoughts. One resident had a concern regarding like a zoning issue, regarding a proposed business. It was just really nice.
I spoke to that same person too and she was very articulate and she knows what she's talking about.
Absolutely.
It was nice to, to speak with her.
I'd also like to commend your colleague, Sue Cody, for her efforts. I had a meeting earlier in the day. I saw her there early in the morning and I know you and her were still putting away things when I left. It was about 7:30 that night. So Park and Rec, you did the town very, very well and I thank you. Please pass that on to Sue.
Absolutely.
And I know you've only been a member, now the chairman of the Parks and Recreation for about three months, but you're doing a great job.
Proud of you.
So I think we have the motion and a second on the proclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we hang on to this proclamation or do we give it to the chairman of the Parks and Recreation? And later on, yeah. Thank you. And while we have Kevin Smith here, he's also going to, the spotlight committee that we're talking about at this meeting is the Open Space Committee and Kevin Smith is a, is a member of that committee. So you, can you lighten the public what it's about and whether or not you need any more meetings? If you can come up to the.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to talk about spotlighting the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee was put together to come up with an open space plan for the town. I did come into the committee kind of late in the planning process, but I did help bring it home and Dr. Z is the liaison to the board, so he's familiar with some of the work we've done. Part of our work was coming up with an open space plan for the town, which we submitted to the town in March and, and has since been passed on to the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Division of Conservation Services and it was approved by both. So what that does is it opens up opportunities for grants and improvements, land acquisitions and projects that we can do as it pertains to the open space plan. A large part of that plan was, was thanks to Bill Napolitano from the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. And that allows for involvement for projects which were just, which was just spotlighted by the Taunton Gazette, like the Taunton River Trail, which would link Taunton to Somerset by way of Dyton by utilizing unused rail beds, parklands and streets. It was also, that project was also reached, recently backed by state rep Jake.
Oakenclough.
Oakenclough? Which, which is good to see that the state is, is willing to fund these projects that these towns are very interested in. It kind of comes at a good time because I think we have a good collaboration between where we're at moving forward with open space, the Trails Committee and Parks and Rec. So we forged a good relationship of communication where hopefully in the near future, we can see that project start to, start to progress for our town. Another large part of the Open Space Committee is a residential design bylaw, which would promote natural land preservation based on environmental and social priorities. A big part of that is, would help us moving forward as a town to have specific guidelines when developers come to our town with proposals. So moving forward in our upcoming meetings, we're going to be concentrating on the residential design bylaw. This committee meets the third Thursday, I mean, the third Monday of every month and we are, next meeting will be the third Monday in August. And we are currently seeking new members if anybody is interested. So if anybody is passionate about this, the work that this committee does, we'd love to hear from you and hopefully we can all work together to bring some of these plans that we've already started to like.
How many members is this committee supposed to, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Supposed to have?
Five, I believe.
I believe, yeah, it's, it's five.
So we like barely, they, I should say, we, because I'm the liaison, but we barely have a quorum right now. So if anyone is sick or whatever, gets a cold, can't make it, we can't, they can't have a meeting.
Right, yes, so we currently have three because unfortunately we lost the chair, Ellen Bidlack, who moved out of town. So yeah, additional members would be hugely helpful because if you have, we can't meet our quorum, then we can't really get any work done.
There's a volunteer form on our website, people interested in joining this committee.
I have a couple of questions in regards to how open space works. I understand you identify lands, but how, what are the funding sources for what you attempt to do? Do you help to bring in the funding for that or do you just come up with the ideas and pursue it and then hand it to the Board of Selectmen or?
So the very first thing that we had to do, so Kevin and I actually joined around the same time and it was to get the open space and recreation plan done. And the, in terms of like what we do, in terms of the actual open space parcels and things like that, we really don't do anything. We serve as almost like a conduit with relevant key stakeholders, like you said, planning, trails, land use, conservation, having conversations with them, CPC, absolutely. Having conversations with them and looking at maps and saying, what parcels may be advantageous to the town? Which ones should we keep? Which ones should we try acquiring? Which ones, you know, don't we need anymore and now we can get rid of and get them off the tax rolls? But the cool thing with the open space plan, to get to your point, and I'm sorry for being long-winded, is. It allows us to be eligible now that it has been accepted, as Mr. Smith had alluded to, for land use grants, conservation grants. And we, we had a conversation recently together about why that was advantageous to us because now we can pull all stakeholders together and have discussions about what grants may be good and why, what parcels of land, what monies we could obtain to obtain a new parcel of land that maybe, may fit in to what we're trying to do with open space and recreational spaces in a certain part of town. So it just opens up new funding sources to answer your question, yeah.
No.
Can I add to that just real, real quick?
I'm sorry?
Can I add to that real, real quick?
Surely.
Just to give, for instance, is we actually, so a grant, we actually, we're going to just miss it this year, but it's a yearly grant that focuses on waterfront park properties. So, so like for instance, like Tricentennial Park would be a good spot to look into using that grant money, but one of the requirements of being eligible for that grant is having an approved open space plan. So, and without this committee, that plan wouldn't have been put together, so.
I do have another question. Now, Mr. Smith, if someone in the town wanted to bequeath through a will or donate to cut their taxes, who would they contact? The chairman of open space or?
You're throwing me some curveballs.
I know. I'm like, we've never been that lucky except for.
Briggs?
Yeah, exactly. Well, he just donated money, not even land.
We also got some other donation, Mrs. Golat's donation.
Yes, that's correct.
On Main Street.
Hello.
We have been very fortunate to acquire land for open space with funding from various sources, often like grants. The land we bought on Brook Street, the western half of the Segregance River and the frontage, that was CPC money. The land right next door, immediately north of our North Highway, again, we bought it open space, recreation, there may be other uses for it. We got money for that, again, locally. I was approached at the event on Saturday by a woman who owns property that she wants to donate to the town, but she does not want it to be built on. And from what she described to me, I told her to get in touch with the Conservation Commission because if the Conservation Commission gets land, people have that restriction on it. And also the Conservation Commission has funds available to buy land. So it would be up to her to talk to them. But her main point was, I got this land, I have no, it sounded like relatives and she doesn't want it to end up being developed, so I suggested she do that. But the other thing too is, as the Board of Selectmen, we have, we are in negotiations, no secret on this one, the three lots of land on Main Street with AstraZeneca. And we get that, that will make a connection between all of the land from Brook Street down to Consul Oak and it will connect up the Consul Oak to Main Street so that you can actually block that distance. Again, the approach to AstraZeneca is open space and recreation. And basically, that's the only reason they would give it to us because they don't want anything done to it, no, no development, building, whatever. And then we've also been discussing with the townspeople, we are still talking about the potential of accepting the piece of land from AstraZeneca that contains the pond and the dam, but we're working, trying to determine if we can get grant funding to have a thorough engineering study of the dam done. They're willing to give it to us, obviously. We need to know what it's going to take to bring that dam up to the next level and ongoing maintenance costs and part of the discussion with AstraZeneca has been, if you want us to take it and we agreed to take it, you know, we can have to give us money to help maintain it. So they haven't said no to anything. So we're still working on all of those. So that's another way we acquire properties that can be for recreation and open space.
Right, and I think the Open Space Committee is more of a liaison for, you know, passing those relationships around or informing, you know, another committee or commission that there are grants available that might help with that. As far as like land acquisition, we would probably look at the piece of land and give our opinion or recommendation on whether or not that land was useful as it pertains to our open space plan. But beyond the, you know, beyond that, that would be outside of our expertise.
And we've got to make note, we have the Trails Committee. So obviously, if we get that, those three lots from AstraZeneca, we know there's a good long distance, roughly, Mr. Ferry said it's at least a mile. We don't do trails, but we have a committee that does, so if we can get it, there's an assignment for them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Golat.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, Mr. Smith?
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations on your first firecracker.
Very much. Thank you for participating.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
You too.
The next scheduled appointment is Jeff Colan on the water meter replacements. Want to update the board on what's going on with the meters?
Nice to see you.
Thanks for having me, Board of Selectmen. I'm here to speak about a recent issue we've had with, let's say, several of our water meters. Let's say around eight years ago, a meter company was selected to, the Dyton Water District selected a meter company for us to use for our metering. It worked very well for about eight years. And in January, there was a, you know, like a Y2K issue, one of those, I remember they talked about that happening back when the. Remember, they talked about that happening back when the dates changed, or a date changed, and it corrupted the meter. It didn't, so when I talk about a meter, you have your water connection in your house where the shut-off is, that's, we call that the dummy part, not your, the part that the water goes through. And it has a register on top which calculates the reading. And then attached to that is a wire that usually hangs up in your eaves. That is the AMR, that is, that sends us a reading as we drive by. That's the electronic part, that's, that is the part that was, I'd say, corrupted. The, we've been working with the company since January to fix this. We were told several times it was going to be fixed. They tried to fix, actually made a few worse. So we now have approximately 1,000 meters that are not reading in town. Which is a significant amount of meters. The first, the first plan of action was to, I mean, we have to do this fairly quick because we just sent out our bills yesterday, and 1,000 meters were estimated, that's, that's not good. So we have to get into 1,000 homes in a relatively short period of time. In negotiating with the meter company, they will help us now. It took a lot of painful negotiating, but they're willing to help us with, with their, let's say, expertise. They have it fixed now, it is, we have to get in the homes, physically get at the meter and reprogram it. Can't do it from outside, so. In the bills we recently sent out, we sent a letter stating the issue. We want to come in, we need to make, the company's willing to help us, but we need to make at least 100 appointments and have them scheduled for them to send a crew out there from Texas. So this is, logistically, it's very difficult, but it's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's one of those, we need the, we need the cooperation from the public, or it's going to cost essentially them hundreds of thousands of dollars because there's not, the warranty does not state, no, no one's meter warranty is going to state that they're going to help us, but they're helping us. So we, we kind of got lucky on that end. So this, them working with us will save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. It is going to be a nightmare. I mean, it is a meter change, it's not a, it's 15 minutes of your, of your time, of the residents' time. And, but making the appointments, blocking them off, having 100 made for them to come down, at least 100, and hopefully we have more, we'll have three crews out there. It will be a representative of their company, us, we'll have one of our employees with them. So hopefully we can have three of them and three of us all going together, running around town. But again, nightmare making appointments, but we have to get, we have to get this done. Or the next round of estimates, we estimated the bill at this point according to the last few bills. I can't do that forever because somebody, if you give somebody a bill and it's low, lower than what is actually on the meter, because the meter is still reading, it's just not sending it to us, then we have to come back and give you a new, you owe us $50,000. And that's not what I want to do. So that's, in essence, when somebody meter doesn't read, the, the correct thing to do is to overestimate it because then you're, you get a phone call, oh my goodness, my bill is $500. Yeah, obviously, something's wrong. We get a call, we get in, we fix it, no it isn't, we just needed to get in, obviously. So at this point, that is the next option. Other options aren't as friendly, but this is, we have to get this done. It's unfortunate, we didn't make the meter.
Sure.
Going forward, we have to look at who we use for meters, but right now, we got to make it whole, so.
Well, that's terrible news. So what, the notice that was sent to the residents, what, what does it say? Does it give a number to calls?
It does, I should have brought one with me, I wasn't. It gives a notice, a number to call, hopefully. We're going to start this around August 2nd, so, because that's how they want to coordinate everything. And so August 2nd seems to be when we want to start this, when they want to start it. We can work with anyone's hours, we'll, you know, whatever, whatever it is, we'll get it done. The letter, it pretty much speaks to what I'm speaking to now.
It's the, it's very important that the public will get these letters to respond and set up an appointment because otherwise their bill is going to be off, it could be more or whatever. And everybody wants to pay the correct amount. Nobody wants to pay it, but everybody wants to pay the correct amount.
We don't want this to linger.
Right.
It's, it's, you don't want it to linger. And we do have approximately 450 homes that haven't changed their meters, and that is going to be another project that we have to get at. It's not, it's not, so we have AMR readings, which for the most part have been tried and true, depends what company it is, all right, we won't go there. So we can drive this town and read the meters in one day. Whereas we have around 450 customers in town that haven't had their meters changed, so we have to walk, walk the town and do it, and it takes weeks. So financially, that is a burden on, it costs money for us to do it, we have employees, it costs them. So eventually we have to get them all changed so we can read this town in, in one day. And it would save the residents money, it would save, but that's another project for another time. We have a million going on, so, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of fires burning, so.
So those that don't have, I happen to have the newer meter, but those that don't have it, you have to physically go in the house and look.
We have to, there's, there's something attached to the side of the house to connect to, and that, that is such old technology that the, the actual gun, we call it a gun.
Yeah.
Not like what the chief has. The gun that goes into, into the unit on the side of the home, they don't make them anymore. If that breaks, like, we, Somerset might have one, they use ours when they, you know, it's like, they're not around.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's coming to the point where like, we, we need to get into the, I mean, we're, we're in the, we're not even in the 20th century at this point, like, we're in the 19th century with that.
So you've, you've got to deal with the immediate issue right now.
We do, we do, this is the pressing issue. Saving everyone money is hopefully the goal, I mean, but expediency is very important as well because there is projects going on and they need to be paid for, obviously. And we don't want to estimate, I don't want to estimate 1,000 bills, that is a nightmare.
I would just encourage the public to, if you get this letter, to respond to and accept the appointment to make it easier for yourself as well as the water department, and the bills will be more accurate.
I was just wondering, do you have a follow-up plan for those homes that you don't get calls?
Yes, we, we will, we will receive, I know we'll receive several calls. It will be very well received, I'm pretty sure, and we'll have to explain it, but most people will be pretty amicable. The ones that don't, unfortunately, there is bylaws in our, we have bylaws in our rules and regs that do state we, we can shut you off for none, for, for non, for not allowing us to change your meter. We haven't gone there, but it is in there, it needs to be in there. It's, it's kind of an important thing because the meter is our cash register, essentially. It is, if you have a meter that is 50 years old, it is under reading. They need to be changed approximately every 15 years. So if someone doesn't allow us to change it, with several are, are out there not allowing us, with the 450 left, you got to have this stuff in your bylaws, every water department does. So eventually, we don't want it to come to that, put it that way. I don't want to shut anyone off, this is our, you know, it's, it's our issue, we want to fix it. Please just work with us.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, couldn't come in a worse time, all right?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks a lot.
I'll bring the chief with me.
So the next scheduled appointment is the police chief, recommendation to hire Alyssa Bennett as a full-time officer. If you don't mind, I'll read the letter that you sent to us, is that okay? It's your letter, I'm going to let you read it, you want to come up to the? Doesn't matter.
Well, good evening to everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, I just want to make a comment about that, this weekend, that event that Kevin Smith did. I was there and it was a great thing, there were a lot of kids there. A lot of people have come up to me saying how he did a great job and how it was a great thing to do, and they're hoping it's an every-year thing, and I think he did it fantastically. So I just want to say he, he did a good job on that.
Getting towards the end of the pandemic, hopefully getting towards the end of it. It was nice to see everybody be able to come out and see each other. We've been locked in our houses for a year and a half, so.
Are you going to apprise the board of our conversation where you volunteered to do the dunk tank for us next year?
I will do it if, if someone needs to do it, I will, I will volunteer my services, I will go out there.
Is that in lieu of one of us, son?
Correct, me.
I don't know if the water, the water was a little cold then, I don't know.
No, it was warm.
Tommy kept the water for about a week, so.
I was wondering if the water was warm there or cold.
It wasn't, it wasn't that bad at all.
So anyways, you know, I'm here tonight to make a recommendation for a full-time police officer for the department. With the proven additional police officer position in our current FY 22 year budget, myself and Sergeant Crumory visited the testing in an interview procedure already conducted last spring, and have selected a candidate for conditional employment at this time. A background check on this candidate was performed by Detective Richards. And after compiling all the data, is recommended that the following candidate be considered as a conditional employment full-time police officer, Alyssa Bennett. Let me talk about Alyssa Bennett a little bit, I don't know if you guys saw her application, she's well-qualified. She actually is a full-time police officer in another town right now. She's going to make a lateral, she found interest in the Dayton Police Department. She took the exam back in February and is very, was very interested in coming here. She attended the full-time Cape Cod Police Academy back last July for the department she was with, and so she's been on there a year. So I'm requesting if we can make a conditional employment with her after she completes her, of course, the PAT test she has to do, the physical and the site test. After that, we can get it going right away. I'm looking if we can start her August 8th, the week of August 8th. That date, I'd like to start it then.
Does the board have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I do have one question, if the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to make a.
If the board appoints Alyssa Bennett as a full-time police officer with Dayton Police Department, she would be the second current female officer in the department, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, if she starts the 8th, she will, you know, start right away. You remember the last one, I came into recommendations I made for the, for the officer, one of them was, was the girl. And she's, will be attending the Plymouth Police Academy in September.
Fabulous.
So she'll be going there, she'll start there. Mr. Hathaway, Patrolman Hathaway is already in, in, started with us, he's doing a great job.
I saw him at the.
He's a good fit, he, he's done fantastic. So this girl would come in and then the, this, the other one we're sending in, in September.
Nice, thank you.
And also, just to let you know, we are in training now with a female officer now with us. She's going to be the reserve, she's training now, and she's, she's doing really well.
Fabulous.
So it, it's, it's going good right now, so.
That's good. I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alyssa Bennett as a provisional full-time officer to begin work as of August 8th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I am going to second it, but my, in the actual motion, do we need to make any mention of what the condition is of the appointment?
That's why I said provisional, doesn't that cover?
Which is the physical and psychological?
Once she completes those, then you can, you can appoint her as a, the, the officer.
Okay, I will, I, yeah, I just want it meant, like, so we all understand that this is pending those provisions. I will second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and I did just want to thank you, Chief, for, I know we just actually passed the 1st of, of July, so the fiscal year just started, and I really appreciate you making this a priority, and I think it will be helpful to the department, so thank you.
There's some other things that we're gonna, I'll be back on to. And hopefully soon that, that's going to come down too, so, and I know it will. So I'll be back for something else.
We can't get rid of you.
No, 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 I want to thank the board for the support, and also TA, Mike Mullin, too, for the support.
Well, your department and you are doing a great job, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll power the Dayton Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Chief.
The next agenda item is public, public input, and I'm going to let Mrs. Goulart, she's going to give us an update on the MMA.
It's nice to see you again.
Yes.
Is that too many ti, too many times in one week now?
Yes, yes, it's a quota, that was my, that was my stormwater outfit.
If you were still a member of the board, you would have been in the dunk, in the tank.
Yeah, you really.
I got news for you, no, I wouldn't.
We would have had to call on the chief.
Just to throw me in.
Exactly.
You wouldn't have needed the chief, there'd have been a whole bunch of people, we wouldn't have put me in there. The last few MMA meetings, I have been really dealing with lots of legislation, and trustees of the reservation had filed a legislation that relates to coastal buyback bills. The intent of the legislation is to purchase property in flood zones, and if there are structures on those properties, is to remove them, so that, I know Mr. Agia has talked about that because obviously we have a waterfront and we have concerns about flooding. But this legislation is in the very early, early stages, and it's been sent to Senator Mark Fichiko and Representative Peak. We don't have an update on that one. Representative Dykma and Senator Rouch had spoken to us earlier about the Clean Energy Act, and which is transitioned to 100% clean energy. Needless to say, that's going to take a while. Senate Bill 1923, Senator Cream, and House Bill 3032, Representative Ehrlich. This is municipal reforestation program. And I had gotten something on that, and I sent it out to a number of people. And the, the thing with the reforestation act, there was some mention today because I'm going to, I'll come back to that when I talk about the HERO bill. But there's a lot of diverse opinions, it sounds good, reforestation, let's do it, but there's some caveats involved. There was a presentation on proposed legislation to expand Clean Water Act. It was interesting that Jen Peterson, who is the representative from Mass Water Works, came out in strong opposition to it. And she said that the organization's not opposed to water resiliency, but all public water systems should have the ability to sell water, and that a drought management plan should be part of the vulnerability planning. She referenced Chapter 30, Section 61. This really got a little heated because water is water, whether it's drinking water, wastewater, stormwater. It's all going to end up in the same place, and hopefully it's going to come back as clean drinking water. But the, the discussion of limiting the use of water, this has been around and has come to MMA a number of times, even to legislation that would, I don't know how you enforce this one, limiting the number of gallons per person per day that you would be allowed to use so that everyone will have a supply of water. That one came back, again, this goes back years and years, and I really don't know how you would attempt to enforce that. On either side of us, we have time, Somerset, they have plenty of water.
Yes.
However, Dayton is looking for water or has an ability to, we need to expand processing, so forth and so on. So the thought that you would tell individuals how much water they could use per day, again, I don't know how you would enforce it, but as it turned out, there was so much, I'll say, discussion on this one, that MMA decided not to take a stand on it. They're just stepping back because I don't think there's any right answer in what was proposed in the legislation is, is going to create more problems than solve. The PFAS and water, that's those chemicals that you can't get rid of no matter what you do, that legislation is looking at being revised again, and there was a study committee that's been appointed to try to come up with some recommendations, but the fact of the. But the fact of the matter is, it's everywhere. It costs a fortune to remove it. And again, this is another situation that there's no simple solution. And we're talking parts per trillion. And there seems to be a discrepancy between what the federal requirements are or their, their rating of parts per trillion and what the state says. So it's kind of difficult for communities to determine what number is the right number. Solid waste. Jeff Beckwith did send a letter in support of recycling, strongly urging the legislature to support recycling of mattresses, paint and electronics, to ban plastic bags in all forms and to institute a small fee per bag on paper bags. My personal opinion is, the cost of doing business should include the cost of paper bags, just like they used to before we had those plastic bags. The HERO bill, the intent of it, Senator Jamie Eld, James Eldrich, Jamie Eldrich as he's called, presented this. It's Senate eighteen fifty-three, In-House twenty-eight ninety, an act providing for climate change adaptation, infrastructure and affordable housing investments in the Commonwealth, and it's called the HERO bill. The first thing, the first issue that was raised was, they gave us a sample of what kind of charges would be assessed to communities in order to fund this. And they're also talking about raising, doubling the fees for when you purchase a house, the fees you pay to the, the local registry of deeds. Now, there was concern because some of that money is for CPC. But the proposal is to double it and use some of the money for this program. Well, the first thing that caused a stir was all counties, with the exception of Barnstable County, would be assessed two dollars per five hundred on the cost. And, and it just keeps going on and on and on. When it was questioned by the representative who was president of the Marlborough City Council, why is Barnstable different? Well, their fees are a little higher. And the basic comment was, if we're going to do this across the state, everyone should be assessed at the same rates and a one particular county should not be singled out. Because as we all know, basically Barnstable is the Cape. There's a whole different, I'll call them, set of valuations when you think about property on the Cape, okay? And a lot of it is not prime residential. It's vacation homes and things like that. So if you're going to be giving breaks, why would you give it to a community that has a very large non-residential population? So, and I, I agreed with Mike. I said, I, I agree. It should be across the board if, you know, if we're going to do this. Getting back to that reforestation thing, there were comments made about developing land for low-income housing, affordable housing, so forth and so on. We talked about, somebody brought up solar farms. And look what they're doing to our lands. And we're talking reforestation over here and we're talking about taxes here and raising fees and doubling registry fees. I said to them, I understand all of this, but you know, I've heard complaints in our own community. People are not happy with the number of solar farms that are proposed. But quite frankly, land on which solar farms are built will eventually be returned to their original use. At least in our town, the equipment will be removed. I don't know if the plan is to replant trees again, but that land will be available for something. By the same token, in this community, we're facing potentially three large housing projects that would altogether exceed well over three hundred homes, which would have a serious effect on services in the town, our schools. Whereas solar farms, once they're built and during construction, costs that are connected to that are covered by the developer. And once they're up and running, obviously they would have police and fire protection, but I would think the, the necessary, the call for those services to be rendered are going to be few and far between. So we did have a special meeting. That one resulted in the letter that Jeff sent about solid waste. We may have another special meeting. We will definitely have an August meeting. Normally we take July and August off, but because there's so much legislation pending and a number of groups are looking for us to weigh in on it. And at this point in time, the only one that MMA has taken a position on is the solid waste because we're all inundated with it and the costs just keep going up and up and up. And I've mentioned to you a number of times, the state is still going to say you can't bring mattresses to the landfills. And so part of that bill also is that the manufacturer of the, the products that are causing problems, like mattresses, are going to have to take responsibility for the production. And they're going to have to step up and either contribute money to some kind of a fund or reimburse communities on a per-unit basis for disposing of mattresses and things of that type that are, the state is saying that you can't put them in a landfill or you can't dispose of them. And right now, we don't have disposal facilities around here. So anyhow, that was pretty much everything that's going on. Like I say, a lot of legislation. They talked about the bottle bill. MMA has not taken a stand on that one yet. But I got to tell you, I heard the presentation again and I thought, well, I guess I'm going to have to write a letter as a citizen and not as a, not as an official from the town of Dayton. The last time it came up, the reason I really opposed the bottle bill was because they were going to include plastic bottles like you have there, nickel on every one of them. And they were also going to go into the beverage aisles in supermarkets. And by beverage aisles, I mean juice. They already have deposits on carbonated beverages and all of that. But the proposal back then was, you know, the orange juice in bottles and the cranberry juice, you name it. And my position was, first of all, I don't think that we should pay a deposit on those bottles because number one, that's not what I'm seeing laying out there. It's nip bottles, which we all have said. Number two, I think with the advent of those plastic bottles, more people are drinking water because it's convenient to have that and not everybody's carrying the ones you can refill and recycle. But I think the thing that was most detrimental at that time was the state predicted they would have twenty million dollars in income from unclaimed bottle deposits. Well, if you're trying to increase recycling, didn't you just tell me the program's a flop? It's not supposed to be a moneymaker. So I did write to the Gazette and it was, the, the article was titled something like the Bottle Bill Boondoggle. And I prefaced it with that I was writing it as a resident, not as a, a member of any board, committee or representative of the town. I got some hateful telephone calls, but that's all right. But the latest presentation now is, again, we're going back to the grocery store. The cost is ten cents a bottle, including the water bottle, but we're going to go and look at, I call them food containers, because juice is considered a food product, up to a liter or more. And I'm thinking, that's a big bottle. And they're not, we are not seeing those along the road or in the gutter or anywhere else. But the payoff to this one is, at ten cents a pop, they anticipate over fifty million dollars in revenue from uncollected deposits. So you see where I'm coming from. And when we discussed it, I said to them, this has not improved anything. The last time we had a presentation about the bottle bill, we talked about nips. I says, oh, I'll support a, you know, deposit on those because they're everywhere. And even the city of Boston that cleans their streets twice a week minimum. They can sweep it tonight and if I get off the train tomorrow and walk up to where MMA used to be, they're going to be laying in the gutter. And we all know that they're, they're everywhere in our community. So MMA has not taken a position. I may be the only no vote on the committee, but based on what I'm hearing, I'm voting no because it's, again, it makes no sense. It's not supposed to be a moneymaker for the Commonwealth. And when I hear fifty million dollars in income, that's a lot of ten cents. That's a lot of bottles that didn't get returned. So anyhow, that's everything about up to date on MMA.
Yeah, so, so the public knows Mrs. Goulart, former selectman in town, is our representative for Massachusetts Municipal Association, which we're all members of. So we appreciate the report. Regarding the nip bottles, I've been asked to bring it before the board to have the town of Dayton have a deposit on nip bottles, which I don't think would work because the people are going to go to the other towns and just get it. I also don't think that, my personal feeling is they ought to give it a nip bottles, period. That I don't think five cents on a nip bottle is going to make somebody bring it to the, have it, to get the deposit back. They're still going to throw it on, on the street. When I, a couple of years ago, when I worked on Brook Street with Mrs. Hay, Hayes, cleaning up bottles and trash that was on the street, we, we collected a hundred and thirty-five nip bottles. All of them were empty. I found a couple of water bottles that were half-empty, but all the nip bottles were empty. I don't know, I don't understand why they were all empty. But they were, so, and I forgot what the favorite brand was, but there was, but people just, you know, on the way to home or on the way to work, it's a shame. They drink their nip bottles and, and throw it on the road, so.
There is a proposal to outlaw the nip bottles and I think, oh, that's an industry thing. They're going to get clobbered. I agree, quite frankly. But there's a bigger issue. It's drinking and driving.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Tossing them out the window as they.
Not just that, and I, nip bottles are out of control in the town of Dayton and I'm sure other, it's not just us, but.
Everywhere.
You know, I will say this, when, when we've done these, and I, I laugh because it's actually really sad. And I don't want to cry about it, but I have found like actually empty, big wine bottles. Like I feel like there could be people out there that are actually not even doing the nips, that are literally drinking wine bottles in their cars while they're driving and then throwing it out. Terrifying, because they're not exercising and, and drinking the wine and throwing it out. They're driving. I mean, it's, it's frightening.
It is.
It really is.
And, and just in closing, when I told the Ariella Lovett, who is the chair of our committee who represents MMA, that I was no longer a selectman, I says, but my elected position is an assessor. But I'm still chairman of the Stormwater Committee. She says, that's how we're going to list you because that's more related to the environmental committee being the Stormwater Chairman. And I said, that's fine with me. And the other thing I want to say is, I was out here Saturday with my table and giveaways for Stormwater. I had to ask Mr. Pilling to go downstairs because I ran out of bags. And I, I used a whole case and I went through almost a second case. I gave away all the grippers. And as a result, I told you we're going to.
All the grippers? There's not even one?
We're going to reorder grippers because they're, they're so in demand. But the other thing too is, eventually we'll probably have to get the bags again because so many people said, I love the bag you gave me and they wear out because you can only, I guess if you wash them or clean them, I mean, it, it's not.
It's bigger than most, it's wide too. It fits a lot in there.
And that's what, I said, well, you know, I, I look at that and that's what I put cereal boxes in to take to the food bank to drop off. And I can put six or seven boxes of cereal in one of those Dayton bags. So eventually we're going to, I think we'll be getting more as part of our public education program. But that event was terrific. I think it was, the turnout was remarkable. People were happy. I saw so many kids, we're going to be looking at items that we can give out for children. All I had was some puzzles, crosswords that I got off the EPA website. But we are also going to look into that because the kids were interested. A troop leader from Rehoboth asked me if I would be willing to come to a meeting and talk to the, her troop about Stormwater. And I said, give me plenty of advance notice because I, obviously I want to get some materials that would relate to students. I, my guess is these students might be late elementary, early middle school. But I, obviously I want to have something that they can, our brochures are fine, but I would like to have something else. But it was really nice to see people interested and, but again, for the first event, it was super. Really, really good. So Mr. Smith did a great job in his committee too.
I was disappointed that if you already, if we already had one of those bags, that we didn't get a second bag. And apparently you remembered giving me the bag because I tried to get a second bag and she stopped me. Oh, you got one.
I got a second.
But no, they're, they're very handy and we use ours, so that's great.
Well, rest assured, we will be having, we will be getting them again. We do have what we bought this time for, although I didn't give many out because I wanted to use up the older materials that we had. We bought the, the blue clips, like you, they're blue, that you put on potato chips or something. And the slogan is to keep your water fresh and that was Mr. Ferry's idea. Because you want to keep the food fresh, you use the clip, but it's a reminder about stormwater management and keeping, if you can, stormwater clean. And then the other thing that we have, that we will be giving out, we have calendars for next year. And I've seen them, the sample came in, so I will have those for you. And we will be sure that they get out, or all of them will be, we only bought five hundred, but they'll all be out before the end of the year. And, but I'll have, I'll have those for all of them, but they're, I believe it's National Parks. And down the bottom, I think it says Town of Dayton Stormwater Committee, Be the Solution to Stormwater Pollution. So, so we will have that going forward as part of our program.
And those grippers are very helpful, especially as you get older. I've had to use it a few times.
Young people, young people find them useful. I'm happy to report as well. Before you go, a resident did stop me at Town Hall with a potential stormwater concern. Who knows if it's actually really something?
Is that the one you emailed to me?
No, it's a different one, but it's, and it's regarding the Brook Street project. So can I forward that along to you? I told them I would put them in contact with you.
We've got two site visits scheduled after, after the breakfast tomorrow, the July event. And one of them is Brook Street. It got added today. So I told Mr. Pilling, I said, yeah, absolutely, we'll go from one to the other.
Okay.
And it, but followed it anyhow because I want to see if it's the same one I heard about. Because if it's a different one, we got to look at it while we're up there.
Awesome. I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I have you here, the July twentieth, with a group from Canada coming down. It's one o'clock at Town Hall. What is, what's the?
Yes, yes. And as far as I know, of all the people that I contacted, Chief McGee has got, he's going to be involved with the new fire truck. But I told him, don't worry, because if there are any questions about the culvert and your role in that, we have some, we have people who can address it and they will, Mrs. Grassi will take notes of the site visit so that anything that is questioned or whatever, that information will be available. Yeah. And everyone's welcome to go to the site visit if you choose, but if you can't, at least if you can greet our international guests.
I hope to be there.
Oh, yes. Okay.
We won't, we won't embarrass you. Don't worry.
I think, again, the man I've been dealing with, Ahmed Hafiz, has, has commended the town of Dayton because he said, we are the only community where they were a half solar, a solar farm that did so much to help them with everything they ran into that weren't created by the town of Dayton. Okay, so, so, Mr. Hall, we, we, one o'clock, our guests hopefully will be at Town Hall. So that it's a meet and greet, but then we're going to go to Brook Street because he's going to get into the nitty gritty. So the last email I sent, the key people that I really need at Brook Street, obviously, Mr. Agia, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Pilling. As I said, Mr. Chief McGee is not going to be available. But the whole Stormwater Committee, if they want to be there, they don't have to. But my impression is that Mr. Hafiz has specific questions about probably, I'll call them construction issues and things that occurred. And Mrs., or Ms. Russell, she's the person I've been talking to about the pilot agreement. And as of the last conference that Mr. Mullen and I had with her, it's resolved. I'm waiting for her to send it back because I'm going to match it word for word with what we said the agreement is. But all of the issues, questions she raised were resolved, so I think we're all set. Would you agree?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so I, I think we're all set there, which means it will be sent to you as a board for your review and then eventually for you to vote to put it on the warrant for the next town meeting in the fall.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your work with that too. Appreciate it.
Always.
So we're still on the public input. I just want to give an update on COVID. As of July eleventh, from June twenty-eighth to July eleventh, we've had two new COVID cases, total of seven hundred and thirty-seven cases. We have four thousand and forty-two vaccinated members of our community. That's fifty percent, so we're fifty percent vaccinated. So I just would encourage as many people, if you're eligible, to get vaccinated, to have the vaccine. It looks like most of those people that are being hospitalized are those that haven't been vaccinated, and the Delta variant is something to be concerned about. So, um, keep on doing the, the good work.
Can I ask a question before?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. You can go first.
Okay. How many fatalities?
That was, that was my question.
We've had seven, so the whole, yeah, we haven't had any additional since March, uh, March eighth. That's the last time we've had, of that week, is the last time we had a fatality.
Does the Board of Health, they probably wouldn't know this, when we received this information, do we get any information on like hospitalizations or anything, or just fatalities and cases?
Nothing on the.
And immunization?
The report that they sent to me.
Okay. Well, it, it's no surprise to me, because the vaccine does not prevent you from getting it. It prevents you from hopefully being hospitalized or worse. I am happy to see that there are only two cases. Like I said, I'm not surprised. I'm definitely going to keep my number on the fatality number and hope that the more people that get vaccinated, we don't have anyone more pass away. So I will keep my eye on that for sure.
Yeah, and people have to understand that even if you have the COVID vaccinations, you're aware of that two weeks. The ninety-five percent prevent you from getting COVID, but that's five percent that you can. So when you see on social media that people saying, well, so-and-so had the vaccine, and then they still got it, there's still a five percent. The thing is, though, you're not, you're probably not going to be hospitalized, probably not going to die from it, you're going to get a, a smaller case of it. It's those, unfortunately, those that have chosen not to get vaccinated are the ones that are at risk. Yes.
I do have a second question. Um, the Delta variant has been hitting children hard. Is he able to give us numbers by age?
Well, he, uh, I can tell you that he, he gives me, on this list here, he gives me the age of those that have gotten COVID. So we have an, for example, uh, the one that we had this past week was somewhere between the ages of forty and forty-nine. The week before was somewhere between the age of fifty and sixty-four. So, but in the past, though, we've had, uh, we had higher numbers for those between zero and nineteen. We had four, four, and two. We've had from twenty to twenty-nine. The last time, which was back in May, we had one. But it seems to be fluctuating. But the, the last time we had someone seventy-five and older was back on May third. And that goes back to March first. That was the only time we had someone that age. And I think it's because that age were the first ones to get the vaccinations. Uh, so, we've had a total of seven hundred and thirty-seven cases in the Town of Dayton.
Since the start?
Was that please?
Since the start of the pandemic.
Yes, since the start of the testing, which I believe goes back to March of twenty-twenty.
Thank you.
Is there any public input?
No, not that I see on the Zoom, Mr. Chair.
Is there any public input from anybody on Zoom? Okay. Uh, Dr. Z, you want to read the announcements, please?
Sure. The Town of Dayton Public Buildings are open to the public. The library is closed to the public, but continues to offer curbside service. The Town of Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, which I believe is this Saturday, located at the Town Hall, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, lower level as a drive-through. Reminder, license your dogs, it is the law. Leash your dogs for everyone's safety. All dogs six months of age or older must be licensed yearly beginning January first. All dogs must be restrained by a leash or chained when on any street or public place in town, per, not our decree, per the bylaw that residents came and put into effect. If you have any questions, please contact the Clerk's Office at five zero eight six six nine five four one one option two. And the Forty-Second Pan Mass Challenge will pass through Dayton on Saturday, August seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Please support your friends with a donation at this annual event, which represents over sixty-four percent of the Jimmy Fund's annual revenue. Selectman Gulart.
Yes.
You were always had comments about the Pan Mass Challenge. Do you have any insider info for this year's?
Um, the, the, uh, the chairman, I'll call him, the lead biker of my team, actually, he's retired from UMass after twenty-some years, but he is still riding. I expect to meet him at the bridge, uh, on that day. We gave up trying to meet at DR because there's too many people. And, uh, so I intend to meet Eric down at the bridge, and his team is, his last name is Heller, so the team is Heller's on Wheels.
I like that.
I lost track of how much money he's raised over the years, but I can tell you, last year, when it was, um, really not an official ride, and they all did rides that would have been equivalent. And, uh, it wasn't the most money he's ever raised, but he told me that it was a good contribution. The target this year is fifty-two million dollars over the two days.
Wow.
And there was an ad in the, I should say, inside of, in the Atterboro paper, I think it was, indicating they are still looking for volunteers to go to Dayton Rehoboth, to be there, to, I guess, help direct people, to feed people, do all the kinds of things, because that's the big lunch break. And that's where literally five thousand people or more eventually pass through the DR site. And, uh, so they are looking for people to volunteer. And, and if people can't volunteer their time or our money, just be out on the roof, because it's Horton to Williams to send us, and it's a straight shot over to the bridge. And there's all these people up there waving and cheering them on. So that's, that's good, too, just so that they have the support. But, yeah, it's, uh, it's a great cause. And, uh, hopefully, they're going to make their target this year.
I hope so. Thank you.
And what's the time on this? What, when do we expect them to be coming through?
Mm-hmm. They used to give us the route and stuff, I remember.
Some of them, I don't know how they get out of service when they do, but people will start coming through Dayton very early in the morning. It seems like the, the traffic rush is somewhere between ten-thirty and noon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based on, you know, where the police details are. But by two in the afternoon, they're gone. If there's any other, they just frag them, but it's, if the rush comes through during that time period. And even if the weather's bad, uh, that's when it seems to be. So, um, I usually tell Eric, call me when you get ready to leave DR, and I'll go down to the bridge and just wait for you. So that's what my plans are.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like, um, if I could actually move the request for the Financial Management Review into that item as well. We don't actually have Zach Blake, but I did actually talk to him, uh, last week. Um, I had a discussion with him, um, and I can give you an overview of what this, uh, oh, you know, actually, our request for a financial, for a Financial Management Review would be about. Um, and there's like a draft letter in, um, in the packet, but essentially, we, um, in our financial team, um, and in our town, we have had a number of transitions that, um, have already happened and that will continue to happen. Uh, we also have been working on and planning a number of fiscal planning, uh, you know, capital planning issues as well. Uh, like, and as part of that, we're looking at policies, we're looking at procedures, uh, and everything we're doing to really strengthen, uh, like, the really good, uh, fiscal, uh, fiscal position that we have now. Um, and DLS, they actually have a very, very, very popular, uh, yeah, program and bureau. Um, and one of the things that's really valuable that, uh, uh, DLS, I'm actually through DL, uh, DLS through DOR does is they do Financial Management Reviews. Um, um, we've never had one, actually, back in twenty-twelve, the Dayton Water District went through one. Um, and it's very, um, it's a very helpful, very constructive exercise where, uh, like, actually, DLS, they come in and they meet, uh, with the Board of Selectmen, they meet with the FinCom, um, and they meet with our financial team, um, and they learn about our processes, they go through our budget, um, and it's about, um, a three-to-four month process, and then they make recommendations on that. Uh, so in talking with Mr. Blake, uh, like, from DLS last week, uh, like, he also agreed that our transitions that we, um, have ongoing, uh, you, uh, like, our goals with what we're trying to do with financial planning and capital investments, uh, like, and all of that really put us in a good position in the need, uh, you know, to have one of these reviews done. Um, and it would be the hope, um, if we could get this letter to, uh, and actually, DLS after tonight, uh, that they could put us in the queue. Uh, like, a rough, um, a rough start date would be around, um, actually, October. Um, and then that would allow the project really to be, uh, you're to be finished with the recommendations made, so we'd have them, um, as we plan forward for, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which will help, uh, actually be helpful there. So I'm excited about it. Uh, you know, uh, yeah, the really wonky side of me, uh, you know, I mean, it's just, I mean, I believe in this, you type of holistic and constructive looking, uh, you know, and assessing where we are and how we go forward. Um, and at this point, I would recommend that we make the request, Mr. Chair.
Does the board have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Yep, that's.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve submission of a request to the Division of Local Services for a Financial Management Review.
A second.
There was a second.
And I just wanted to, I don't know if you said this, and I apologize, just so the, um, residents and taxpayers are aware, this is, as I understand, free of cost to the residents of Dayton. Um, and that's why, when we first discussed this, I thought it was such a worthwhile thing. Um, as everybody knows, um, we have the principal assessor who is retiring. Um, we have the treasurer collector, who I don't believe and has been very honest about probably not running again. Um, so there is, now is the time to have someone come in, um, and free is always good, um, and do that comprehensive review, give recommendations, um, point out areas for improvement, areas of strength as well. So I look forward to that, and I wanted to thank the Town Administrator for following through on it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So moving on, uh, through the agenda, I believe the next, um, item in the agenda, um, is, uh, the announcement of, um, nearly a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar grant award, uh, that the town, um, actually learned about just after its last meeting. Um, it's a Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Award from, uh, from the Department of Transportation. Um, and this is actually a second, um, it's a second grant award from, uh, like, actually, from the Shared Streets and Spaces, um, and I think two years. So this is very exciting for the town. Um, and actually, um, ever since our first grant, we've been working on a second. Um, and I really, really, really want to thank Dr. Z. Um, I, um, I also wanted, I also thank ADA, um, ADA Coordinator Gail, um, and Superintendent Tom Ferry for their work, um, uh, over last fall, um, and in the winter. Um, I'm actually, the town applied twice, and as they say, the third time was the charm. And, um, and we applied. And the really good thing is, at town meeting, there was a special article that was re-appropriated, um, actually, to be able to, uh, to actually fund a lot of the work now that Grant will now pay for. Um, and this essentially, I mean, essentially frees up that a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar article. So, um, it's good news all around. It's good news for the accessibility improvements that, uh, uh, you know, continue to be a priority for the town. Uh, you know, like, it's, um, it's a, it's another success in the federal back half for grants. Um, and it's, oh, and up, oh, you know, like, and also, oh, I can also that we're funding this really without, oh, you know, actually relying on the Dayton taxpayer to help fund it. So, um, I actually followed up with DOT earlier today. Uh, like, all we've heard, um, actually, so far is, um, is that we've got the grant, but I want to follow up. We have time constraints and commitments, um, and I want to follow up and get, um, and get that going, uh, you know, with the state, so we can get everything off the ground and complete the project. So like, again, I thank you, Dr. Z, uh, and to Mr. Gail and to Mr. Ferry for their work.
Good work.
And.
If I, if I could just add, add to that, I've, the past couple of years, I've heard a concern from a resident regarding Lincoln Village, that there's a crosswalk there, and then it goes to a sidewalk that doesn't have the, the ramp to, for it. And he contacted me again this week, and I was able to tell him that that's one of the items on the.
You were the hero.
He was very pleased with that. And, uh, so this is great news for the town. This is a, a great grant. I want to thank Dr. Z, Jonathan Gail, Tom Ferry, and also our Town Administrator. And you mentioned in your letter, also Representative Pat Hadad and Senator Mark Pacico for their assistance in getting this grant, so.
Yes, no, and they've been extremely helpful all along. And they're really, really, and I forgot to mention this, but, oh, you know, like, in terms of the focus of the grant, it's actually at locations, oh, you know, like, actually across town, uh, like, we have improvements happening in North Dayton, uh, we have improvements happening down, um, actually by the library and Main Street. So there are going to be improvements actually across the community. Um, and that's equally exciting, because we're making investments in all of town. So.
I think it's important, while we have, uh, Selectman Gulart here, a former Selectman Gulart, just to say, um, I never, I, I always knew sidewalks and, and possibly installing them was important, but I was always driving down the bridge, and you know, you get to that part, and it's so pretty. You get to the top of the bridge, and you can see in either direction. Drive a little further. Just seeing the families walking down Center Street, for example, where those sidewalks are new, um, people exercising, and just to think back just a couple of years ago, and you didn't really see that. I mean, you'd literally risk, put your life in your hands walking down that street when there were no sidewalks. Um, so I just think it's really important, and I, and I want to be very clear, not just, although it will absolutely be a huge benefit for the elderly, for our seniors, for our disabled, but just in general for anyone. It is safer to have pedestrians on sidewalks. Um, and so I just want to reiterate that, and thank everyone for, um, not just pioneering the installation like Selectman Gulart did of sidewalks, but really taking that ball and running with it, and continuing to try to get grants to support these infrastructure projects throughout the town at no cost to the taxpayer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Selectman Hull.
If at all possible, if I could read into the record the locations of these improvements, so that the public are listening.
Sure.
The two would be on record, so they know if it affects their neighborhood. Uh, infrastructure improvements is part of the Safe Streets and Paths Project, and grant award will include two ADA-compliant curb ramps and cuts to be installed on Main Street and Elm Street, Warner Boulevard and Spring Street, School Street and Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Avenue by Johnny's Market, Summer Street and Spring Street, sidewalk across Bow Street and Spring Street and Winter Street. Also, crosswalks and two ADA-compliant curb ramps will also be installed at Center Street near the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge, next to the Bristol County Agricultural School, Main Street near the Dayton Public Library, Lincoln Avenue at the Lincoln Village Senior Housing, and at the intersection between Lincoln Avenue and Spring Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Hull.
I want to talk about that.
Thank you. So, like, and then finally, if I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a quick update, um, on the library, um, in the, um, in the F, um, in the effort to procure the temporary modulators. Uh, so as part of the procurement process yesterday, um, act, actually, along with, along with the building commissioner, uh, so like, the building commissioner and myself, along with the library director and, uh, I mean, Rita Rujo from the Library Board of Trustees, we took, um, actually, a road trip to Littleton, um, and we inspected a potential trailer that actually came back and we were quoted for, um, as part of our procurement process. Um, uh, like, and we really, uh, like, we really got a good visual. We were able to talk and plan out, um, exactly what type of programming we could have in the modular, um, and how that, I mean, how that very temporary program would also relate, uh, you know, to the. Um, and how that, I mean, how that very temporary program would also relate, uh, you know, to the egress work that, um, actually the engineering also actually started on that yesterday as well. Um, it was a good meeting, uh, like we do have another call by the end of the week with another company. Uh, you know, who, um, who also responded to our, our FQ and our request for quotes. Uh, so we're going to talk to, uh, we're going to, uh, talk to that company. Um, and then from, then from there in very short order, we're going to make a decision and a recommendation, uh, you're based on the prices, uh, like, like in the inspections and the conversations that we're having both. Uh, like we requested three quotes, uh, we received actually two to date. Uh, like both actually fit within the perimeters of, um, our budget, and we hope to, uh, you know, have a plan again, you know, to have all the work done, uh, to have the modular, uh, actually onsite delivered and up and running by Labor Day. Uh, so that is our target. That's, uh, like also the requirement. Um, and I do want to thank all of our partners in this effort too, because once, uh, like that, uh, once we have, uh, once we have the modular procured, uh, like we will like then, uh, like actually like have, uh, actually have conversations here locally about the driveway, about the parking, uh, all the accessibility for the parking and all that. Uh, additionally, we've already had conversations with the sewer commission, uh, like about the sewer tie-in. Uh, we've had conversations with the water district as well about the water hookup, uh, like on the site where the old Briggs House was as well. Uh, like, so like we're engaging all the stakeholders that we need to already. We're going to continue doing that. Uh, like, and we have a, uh, like, and we have a plan to do that. But again, I mean, at this point, we, like, as I mentioned before, a few weeks ago, we have a, like, in terms of our planning, we have a short, short-term plan, uh, to get this done by, um, actually Labor Day to keep our accreditation from the state in check. Uh, and after that, we're going to really through that and continue through the end. Uh, you know, uh, you know, we, uh, like, uh, like also have to have another short-term plan that looks, uh, like that from now, uh, you know, to three to five years, and then like well beyond five years as well. So all that work, we, um, actually at our FinCom meeting last night, uh, like actually had that, uh, like a similar conversation with them about the stages and intersecting with capital outlay. Uh, like, uh, and with the municipal building, uh, the municipal building needs to the committee as well. So, uh, all these efforts are underway. It's a team effort, but we're making progress. So I just wanted to bring the public and the board up to date on that as well.
You had mentioned yesterday at the FinCom that once we, uh, sign off on the, whichever company we're going to go for the module, it's going to take about thirty days. That's really bringing us close to, uh.
Uh, yeah, that is only one of the companies. Um, and the other company, uh, we believe at this point we can get a modular here soon.
Because now we will have to wait till the twenty-eighth, I guess, to vote on it.
Yes.
We could have a special one. I, I would be, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to say like we should. I, I will make myself available for one if the board wishes. I think that's a special occasion, you know, to.
We have to do that. Said, they put pressure on me, so I'll make myself available. This is what they do all the time, you know, but I'll make myself available. Also, no, seriously, I, I'd be willing to, this is an important issue, and we need to act on it as quickly as possible.
I got a question for you, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible that maybe do a community day where once the building's set up, yeah, people would pick up trucks and grab those books, bring them up, and try to help the town to get that, so we meet the.
Like the highway, like the highway department, you mean?
Well, highway department, but it may be additional help, like those people want to multedangers help, like bring books in, whatever, and just try to get them up and running before that period ends where we save our accreditation, so we don't lose it. Because I think you'll get some people that would actually come out with their trucks on a Saturday and just say, what do you want me to do?
Yeah.
You know, just a thought.
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a great idea. I have a pickup truck. It's a small pickup truck, but I can, uh, clearly, uh, bring some books off. So if that's a possibility on a Saturday, that would be great. And even people at the modular to set up the books and that kind of stuff too. I mean, we can deliver books.
Yeah, but then they set them up.
That'd be great. It's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Bonding thing too.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Bonding over books.
Yeah, it's probably going to be Labor Day weekend, but that's all right.
What else would we be doing other than moving our library?
Uh, thank you.
May I ask a question, not so related directly to the library, but about the five-year plan and how it all intertwines? Is the municipal, so we're, we know we're going to have this period where, yes, we're working on the short-term solution, but like the long-term solution is we're waiting on a grant, and we're on a list, and we can't come off it because they're not accepting new ones. We all know that. Is it not possible for, and I don't know if it's the Municipal Building Study Committee, but if we could really start looping in the Capital Outlay Committee and looking at the fire station has issues that need to be addressed, the highway garage has needs, and maybe this is the time where we need to advance the ball on one of those projects while, where the long-term solution for the library, where just our hands are tied in terms of the state agency that governs the giving of the grants. So I'm just thinking if we all, we all want these projects to happen, we don't want to do one or the other. As Selectman Hall has said when we rolled into town meetings, so if we could rope in the Capital Outlay Committee and start seeing if we want to move on the fire station, addressing whatever those issues are, thinking of solutions there, or the highway garage, or both. But I think we need to be doing something while we know that the library, we're sort of, that project is not going to happen unless we get a grant, and even then it's still a question. We have to get the public to be on board, right? So that's going to take time. So I just think we might want to think about advancing the ball on one of the other projects while we know we're waiting.
I think we need to, the Capital Outlay Committee needs to prioritize what they need to do. I mean, it was mentioned yesterday, maybe the library's a five-year down the road, but there, there is a process that we hopefully will, will happen soon in the net. Regarding that, we do need to, uh, you know, uh, two new members to Capital Outlay Committee, if I'm correct from last night. One is to be appointed by the FinCom, an at-large member, as well as one from the Board of Selectmen, at-large member.
I thought we, I thought this was already done.
So, so, so the Board of Selectmen, so the Board of Selectmen initially appointed Chairman Pacheco, but the bylaw.
No, no, I know. I thought we already appointed someone. I sent everyone an email, like when I was acting town administrator about this, that we needed to have someone that wasn't from the board, and then FinCom needed to pick someone. So how are we four months down the road, and we still haven't done it?
Well, in our defense, we've only had two meetings.
I don't mean it as an offense, by the way.
Preliminary meetings. I believe we're going to meet again in August.
Uh, August nineteenth is the next scheduled meeting. Uh, yeah, so we, so I believed in May, we, I believe in May, we erroneously, uh, like actually pointed, oh, actually, so, I could point at Selectman Pacheco, but, um, and also.
Oh, wait, I understand. It couldn't be you. Okay.
Right, so I'm.
I'm understanding. That's why I'm thinking we did it.
I'm the liaison person, but I think we had a volunteer. I saw a hand go up in the back, a volunteer, somebody who was, wants to be part of the Capital Outlay Committee. No?
Oh, are you sure?
I did see the hand go up.
But I, I would like to, I would like to comment. This is directed at Selectman Hall. Each selectman had a list of capital projects they could work with departments. Chad Chou, my highway department, and the fire department. So obviously you inherited those.
No. Highway department, Brett is going to do the.
I inherited the fire, which made a lot of progress.
He's got his two, but then they also took one of each, uh, my colleagues took one of your projects on. I was very silent until this time. I did not volunteer.
So, the, the fact of matter is, there is also the one that all three of you should be looking at, and that's the town-wide fuel station.
Yes.
Where we are with that, I should say, where we were with that, we were trying to get DDP to send this particular individual out to meet with us. And Mr. Ferry knows who it is. He can give you the name.
Okay.
And it was left, we're going to get back to you. Well, needless to say, um, the election came, and I thought of this again. We need to get in touch with DDP to talk about the fuel-wise, town-wide, uh, fuel station at the landfill. But connected to that is also the potential far-right highway garage at the landfill. Because it is the landfill, we need to have DDP involved. So we really need to reach out to that individual and get an appointment and have him come here and meet with the appropriate people, do the site visit, because my understanding is we need DDP permissions to do this. We actually had, uh, an engineer from, I want to say Weston and Sampson. When they came to town to look at some things that we had potentially, um, and they did the study of the dam. This is way back when, under that phase one and phase two, when Mrs. Aaronstein was here. Tommy and I took them around town and showed us potential others, and it was the landfill site that we talked about. And, um, having had both of those departments on my list, um, Chief McGee is looking for, even in addition to Station One, a new station. Mr. Ferry is looking for a new facility, because if you look at all the facilities in town, we finally got a police station. That was probably the worst. We replaced it. And I would say the next one on the list, as far as overall condition and serviceability, is the highway garage. We're fortunate that when we had the oil leak spilled, that we had to dig up the parking lot out front to clean up the mess, um, and they lost some storage space. We were fortunate that the old police station is used just for storage. But, uh, if something could be done about the relocation of the highway department to an appropriate facility at the landfill, that's going to free up two pieces of property that the town owns that could be potential development for businesses or whatever. So just, just something to think about. I'm glad to know that you split up these and you're, we're working on.
Absolutely. We're not going to let your hard work. I do want to commend you, though. I did meet with Chief McGee recently to go over the list, and I know it was a list that you guys had worked together on. And, um, you know, there's still a lot of big items there, but a lot of them have been checked off. So I just wanted to thank you both for working together and making a lot of progress on that.
Both, um, the citizens of Dayton have been, uh, very generous to both the fire department and the highway department. And because since we formed like the, our committee, the three of us with our projects, the list of equipment that those departments have asked for has been reduced. And yes, there were substantial purchases, and, uh, so certainly we thank the voters for funding those. Uh, that was, that was really good. Uh, so that was, there has been a lot of progress they.
Absolutely. Um, I did just want to also point, uh, relative to the Capital Outlay Committee, Mr. Chairman, we did receive, um, recently, within the last two hours, an application from Sean Urban for the Capital Outlay Committee, so maybe we could act on that at the next meeting. And he'd be great on it, so.
Would that be our representative?
Yeah, we're stealing him. Absolutely. We'll make the finance committee work for theirs.
To appoint.
I, um, did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Ferry on Saturday to discuss my appointment. And I'm going to be meeting with him individually, just so people know. I don't know when the man sleeps. He has given both the fuel storage and town garage a lot of thought. He has preliminary plans. The one thing that he voiced a concern, and it is a concern of mine as well, is coordination with the Capital Outlay Committee. Right now, we have three potential major projects. Fire department, South Main Street, DPW building, and the library. Now, that puts a lot of pressure on the Capital Outlay.
In the field depot.
Of establishing a priority list. And logistically, what he voiced to me, and I have a concern, is how the Capital Outlay is going to process three different groups coming in and all advocating for their project. Keeping in mind the history, as many of us know, of how other projects, example, the library, have been bumped by, um, different other groups who had either strong or political advocates or need because of, in the case of the police station, the feds were on Titan's case.
Correct.
Um, so that was the one area, you know, as far as his plan, he felt confident he could put something together in a timely fashion. But what is a timely fashion based on, you know, the Capital Outlay Committee is a relatively new group. So there's a lot of pressure on them to.
Well, they existed. They've, they've always existed, but unfortunately, the problem was there weren't like a lot of members. And then it really was just Mr. Rendon, unfortunately, and so he was already on finance committee. So I think he just kind of, things just fell on him as, as an individual. So now we've revamped it, and, um, that's, that's a major question, but I think they will sort it out with things like how much things are going to cost, how, you know, what is actually needed? Is it a new building? Is it a renovation or, or a expansion? And I think that would help guide them in terms of the timing and prioritization of everything. To not have it just be, well, we think it should, a group of people that say, well, we think it should be X, Y, and Z, you know?
Is there anyone on Capital Outlay from the assessors' office?
I don't think that's per the bylaw, no. There, so the residents vote, I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize. I know it's the treasurer, the town administrator.
Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner, a member of the finance committee, someone appointed by the finance committee, someone appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and there's someone I'm forgetting, obviously. Town accountant, thank you. And I think those are the seven individuals, as I recall.
Yes, the building commissioner is not on it, but there's an interface with him in the Municipal Building Needs Committee.
Okay.
Actually, I thought it was on.
Is the treasurer in a position to be able to speak about how the price of a project will impact taxes?
I would assume the treasurer would work directly with the assessing department to be able to answer those questions, yeah. Because essentially, it's the treasurer that pays the bill.
Right.
They should know if, if we can pay the bill essentially or not, so, yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's going to take, all, you know, all these three projects that we just talked about are needs, not just wants, but they're needs. We need a new library. We need a new highway department, and the fire station needs either renovation or a new, uh, fire station. These are all important issues. I think it's important that when it comes to special town meetings, and what we get this so-called free cash, that we put money in a stabilization, the Capital Outlay, uh, stabilization fund, so that when the, when these become available, we can use those funds and, and not have such a burden on taxpayers. So the, the library is, which was mentioned yesterday, is probably a five-year project, so we're not going to vote tomorrow to build a new library and have it, uh, there in six months from now. So that's going to take a little bit of time. We have, uh, we, before the labor, um, the library commission in the state, we've been given that four million dollar grant to renovate Andrew Carnegie. We have to do matching funds. I'm a lot of supporter of that. I've made that clear to everybody. Uh, I don't think the townspeople are going to pass that. If, whenever it comes, they tell us, here's your four million dollars, I think we're going to, the town's going to reject it. We'll have an opportunity, hopefully, to have an engineer design a new library for us, and where we're going to place it, and go before the, um, the commission, again, the library commission, ask for a, a grant for that. That's going to take a few years, so we can work on these other, other projects. We can't even apply for that now, because they're not accepting any.
Can, can I ask you?
The competition is very high for that, yes.
Regarding just the library portion that you were just talking about, I feel like you were just giving us like an example, but were you suggesting that we would, even though it seems like everybody is on board for the fact that we don't want to see that building renovated in that manner? Because it's not, it's, it's no longer like the, the Andrew, I don't feel like I'm speaking to the historical people, but I have heard their concerns, and it does, it's no longer the Andrew Carnegie building that we were gifted. Are you suggesting that we would wait for that process to play out with that grant before making a decision to, we, can't we just withdraw if we're all?
I, I think you're, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think we ought to keep it there until we're eligible to apply for a grant again.
Yeah.
And then we have to go before the townspeople, get the funds to, to an engine, you know, design of a new building, and then we ought to apply and then withdraw.
But we're not letting it go to the people with the, that project, is?
Well, it, it depends on what stage we're in. We were given that grant. They didn't give us the four million dollars, but we, they said we're eligible. We're on the list, I think, when, maybe number fourteen. Or somewhere down the road. They usually do two a year, so that even could be seven years. This is the, my point was that the library. This is, my point was that the library is not going to be immediate. It has to be on our radar. It's clearly on my radar. So we have to not forget that. But there's other projects too, but we need to start saving money so that we can do these purchases and not put the whole burden on the, on tax, on the residents. Mrs. Gulart, please.
And the other thing I want to mention that kind of relates to what Mr. Hall said was, when the three of us had our project assignments and we were all working on them, we knew that once the study for the super line that came in, we got a price tag, it's like, well, that's going to be on hold. Again, the library is on hold, but other projects that we had, making buildings handicap accessible and renovating this building and next door into, obviously, those are moving ahead. This building's done and, and next door is, you know, making good progress. Police, excuse me, fire and highway, we made progress relative to, they had lists of equipment, and we did make progress. But not in any of our three assignments were their plans to add on to the elementary school. That popped up like a mushroom. And we had the money to pay for it. We didn't borrow it. By the same token, going forward, even though the Capital Outlay Committee per se doesn't deal with school issues, because we're waiting to hear from their study committee or their Capital Outlay Committee, we have to be cognizant of the fact, down the road, that may happen. That's why it's important for the board to move forward with, I'll call them the in-town issues. And another thing you need to be thinking about, and I discussed this with the town administrator, with these pilot agreements that are being approved, the money's going to start coming in, even though some of them haven't broken ground. But the July first bills will be going out based on the schedule. The board needs to take action and discuss how that money is going to be handled. When Mr. Swatz was still on the Finance Committee, I had talked about that and said, that money, a large portion, if not all of it, needs to be put into special accounts, whether it's the capital stabilization or rental stabilization. So that when projects come along that are going to require either payments or even bond issue payments, the money's there. Mr. Swatz and I didn't agree. He felt that that money must be on the table. I would just say to you, you're going to have to discuss it. This is considered, it's not one-time money, but we're getting the money upfront, front-loaded so that most money will be coming into the town at the beginning of the contracts, whether it's a 20-year contract or a 15-year contract, we need pilot agreement. But on the future agenda, you need to have this discussion because I don't think it should be on the table that can be expended for the routine operating expenses for the town. And we saw at the last, or we read at the last Rehoboth Town Meeting, they were able to acquire properties to handle some of their needs. And they did it. A lot of it had to do with earmarked money from pilot agreements. Interesting thing, I happened to get a copy of a pilot agreement from Rehoboth that's on the landfill. Their pilot agreements are 20, this one is 20 years. It's the same amount of money every single year. And when I looked at that, I thought, no, 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 we're not doing that in Dyke. That's why we went with upfront loaded. But anyhow, this is just something you need to think about because there will be money coming in. But you need to, and if the, I believe Mrs. Burghardt said the first payments will be due on that bill that comes out for, you know, when we all got through the first of August. So you need to stop thinking about and discussing, how are we going to handle the receipts from pilot agreements? Because it's that important.
And you and I went to that MSA meeting in Como. But they were able to build a fire station, a police station.
Fire station, library, and the money they had for the police station. The police was still in the old building down the road, but they had the money to do it. And it was pilot agreements on cranberry bars. So we all know that that money is for either 15 or 20 years based on the pilots that we have so far. But that doesn't mean we're always going to have the money, and we're getting most of the money upfront. So that the small amounts that will come in as those pilots, you know, expire, that is not the kind of money you want to say, oh, we're getting a big chunk, let's put it into the operating budget. Because you know what? It decreases every year. And once you set that amount of money, if you're relying on it, you couldn't go back to the taxpayers and say, oh, by the way, it's decreasing, so you need it from you. That's why you really, you really need to discuss this soon. Mr. Muller, do you have a comment?
To that point, just really quickly, that's exactly when I, when I had that discussion with, actually Zach Blake at the Department of Revenue, like about our financial management review, I specifically said I, I mentioned our pilots and I also mentioned the marijuana revenue that we have good reason at this point to believe will eventually come into the town. And I asked him, as part of this review, like in DOI has worked with us and DLS has worked with us to make recommendations, like as, like as to what, like other specific aspects of the laws, you know, and the regulation through DOI, that we have that ability as a town to make sure we do it to, you know, like actually make recommendations to town meeting to separate that out. Oh, you know, so we have actually potential funding sources for the capital. So it's exactly how we're looking to go forward.
I just also want to point out before we move on that every year since at least I've, we've been here together, and you two, Selectmen Pacheco, we have tried to, and we have actually put money into the capital stabilization. There have been years where we did that, but then we put less than we had anticipated because we ended up, I don't know, lowering the tax rate. There's many other things that we've done with the free cash that wasn't just, you know, spend it. So I'd be open also to a discussion about, instead of lowering the tax rate, which by the way, most people are going to see a higher tax bill because your house is worth more year after year. We can't control that, and I think we need to accept the fact that we've lowered the tax rate five out of the last six years. Unfortunately, because homes are, it's a real, it's a seller's market right now. We all know that. Homes are worth more, and we can only really tinker around the edges. But what we can do to what Selectmen Gulart is saying is put more money in that stabilization account, knowing what we have down the pike. I'm happy to have that conversation and assess our approach to free cash at the upcoming special town meeting and going forward.
My question was, is there a limit or maximum in that stabilization account that we can add to?
No, I don't think there's a limit. Selectmen Gulart's saying no.
If, not if, when the Board of Selectmen working with the town administrator comes up with a plan on what to do with money from pilot agreements and the cannabis when that gets up the running, any money that comes in, they will classify, but it's going to take a vote at town meeting, a vote, it's a two-thirds vote to actually put it into one account, two account, whatever, and it's that two-thirds vote that gets it to commodity. The most important thing is, when the money we have been able to put aside into stabilization or capital stabilization has been based on what we've had in free cash. And when we've had years when, when, for example, the Building Commissioner had a good year with building permits and all of that, local receipts, we had money to put aside. But what you have to focus on on this is, this is new money. It's not related to, for example, building permits. The money that the Building Commissioner charges for a solar farm building permit goes into estimated receipts and closes out to free cash. The pilot agreements, that's not where it goes. That's why it's important. You've got to identify what your plan is. The voters still have to vote to move it into those accounts if that's where you're going to go. But the whole thing is, you will know ahead of time what kind of money we're talking about. Soon everybody pays their tax bills because we've got a schedule. It's new money. Not only that, it's going to continue to decrease each year. Yes, we're going to have new pilots because we've got farms going on that we haven't negotiated for yet. But eventually, they're all going to go away sometime unless they all replace the panels and go in, which we have no way of knowing. We can only go out 20 years at this point. And the first 10 years are the important years. And that's why it's important to say, this is new money. This is not based on local receipts. It's not based on how many permits are issued or anything else. This is special money, and that's why you need to really think about what you're going to do with it. Quite frankly, we need to protect it so that it's there when you need it. When, not if, when you need it. It's going to be when you need it, okay?
Thank you, Selectmen Gulart.
Mr. Muller, you think we can have something ready for the special town meeting? Or is this something that should be at the annual town meeting?
For the pilots, I'm hoping, actually, for the pilots in marijuana, I'm hoping to have something ready for special town meeting. There are templates out there, like in terms of wording, like in working with DOI. I'm hoping, but I don't want to commit to be able to do it, but that's my goal.
I will, you know, this is our first rodeo, and I know you want to move on, Mr. Chairman. I will just caution you about automatically thinking we should put the money from the cannabis businesses into the stabilization account. And the reason is, I think we should wait maybe six months a year to see, because we don't know that if it's going to have any impact. Like a solar, solar farm just sits there. Like you said, you were talking about this earlier. It doesn't really require many resources or services from the town. But we don't know, like, if there's going to be break-ins. And then, please know, I'm not fear mongering, and I'm not saying that's what's going to happen. But we don't know if that's what's going to happen, quite frankly. And I think it puts us in an uncomfortable position to think that we're going to put that money right away into stabilization account when we don't know if, if there are going to be potential increases to services as a result of these businesses being here. And I know you already know that too.
Just really quick, what we're talking about isn't that, like actually per se, putting that money into stabilization at least yet. It's explaining and work, and working with DOI to explain, like in a special, in a special town meeting warrant article about how that revenue is going to be segregated, like essentially from other revenues potentially.
And I think we need to keep track of at least the impact fee money, so we will definitely have to do that, yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is old business. We had an open meeting law complaint resolution. I received an email on July 2nd from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of the Attorney General. Dear Chair Pacheco, this office received a complaint from Patrick Higgins on March 14th, 2021, alleging that the Dyke Board of Selectmen, the board, violated the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25. The complaint was originally filed with the Board of, the Board on February 12th, and the board responded by letter dating February 25th. In this complaint, Mr. Higgins alleges that the board convened an executive session without a proper statutory purpose. We resolved this complaint by informal action in accordance with 940 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 29.07-2A and find that the board violated the open meeting law by meeting in executive session without a proper statutory purpose. In reaching this determination, we reviewed the original complaint, the board's response to the complaint, and the complaint request for further review. We also reviewed the video recording of the Board of Selectmen's public meeting from January 25th and February 12th. The open meeting law requires that meetings of a public body be properly noticed and open to members of the public unless an executive session is convened, see general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20A-B-21. A public body may enter an executive or closed session for any of the 10 purposes enumerated in the open meeting law, provided that as first convened in an open session, that a majority of members of the body have voted to go into executive session. That the vote of each member is recorded by roll call and entered into the minutes, and the chair has publicly announced whether the open session will re-convene at the conclusion of the executive session, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A-B. One permissible reason to convene an executive session is to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, Purpose 2. However, a public body may not discuss an individual's professional competence in executive session, see District Attorney for the North District versus School Committee of Wayland, 455 Mass. 561, comma, 568, in 2009. Although it's clear that professional competence must first be discussed in open session, how that evaluation will factor into a contract or salary negotiation strategy may be suitable discussion for executive session, OML 2019-57-2. During a January 25th meeting, the board entered executive session for two purposes, the first of which was the subject of this complaint. On the meeting notice, the board cited the open meeting law Executive Session Purpose 2 and further specified that the board would discuss an update on performance evaluations. Performance evaluations and discussions over the employee professional competence must occur in open session as they do not fit within any of the 10 permissible purposes to enter executive session, see OML 2021-45, OML 2018-38. Therefore, if the board had discussed the performance evaluation of professional competence of an individual employee in executive session, this would have been a violation of the open meeting law. In response to the complaint, the board asserts that the board did not enter executive session to discuss the performance evaluation of professional competence of any individual. Rather, the board states that it discussed a more general topic, the performance evaluation process for non-union personnel. This purpose also does not fit within any of the 10 permissible purposes for convening in executive session and was therefore not a permissible topic for the January 25th executive session, see OML 2019-59. For this reason, we find that the board violated the open meeting law by meeting in executive session without a lawful purpose. We order the board immediate and future compliance with the open meeting law and caution the board that a determination by our office of a similar violation in future may be considered evidence of intent to violate the open meeting law. We also order the board, if it has not already done so, to release to the public within 30 days a receipt of this letter the portion of the January 25th executive session meeting minutes which relate to the impermissible performance evaluation discussion. However, this order does not extend to any portion of the January 25th executive session minutes that were convened under a separate executive session purpose, and we make no ruling on the permissibility of the board continuing to withhold minutes on other topics. We now consider this complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved. This determination does not address any other complaint that may be pending with our Office of the Board. Please feel free to contact the Division at 617-963-2540 if you have any questions. And it's signed by Sarah Monahan, Assistant Attorney General, Division of Open Government. And a copy of this was sent to the Patrick Higgins, Dyke Board of Selectmen, and Executive Assistant Karen Brady. So we, so we're going to, at some point, review the executive board minutes and then in executive session to, hopefully, to release those minutes. And hopefully, we'll have that done before August 2nd, or maybe August 1st. It's 31 days. Did it say 30 days? So hopefully, we'll have that. Any questions regarding that?
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
Since I was on the board at the time.
We were going to blame it on you, but we didn't.
That's okay. Since I was on the board at the time, I wasn't aware he actually filed it. I remember him being at a number of meetings, and I remember explaining to him in open session when he said that we had done something wrong. And I thought all of his concerns were addressed, and he said he was going to withdraw, whatever. But again, there were so many. Obviously, one would be sent in. My other thought is, in listening to what you just read, the only part of those executive session minutes that have to be released are the part that relates to that specific thing. The other topics in there, if you will, will all be blanked out. I don't even remember what happened that night. That's why I love to see them. Because I have been reviewing executive session minutes for Mrs. Brady, and some of them I have marked clearly do not release, litigation, and process, or whatever. And then others I just put, okay, releasing my, an date in my initials. But I was surprised to hear that he did actually, as I said, there were so many, we couldn't keep track of them anymore. But I would certainly like to look at them, and I will give you my opinion on, on what I think what is being referred to. Because certainly, I'm glad it came out that way. There was never any intent to violate anything. And I think that, I think the board has always done what And I think that, I think the board has always done what it has in the best interest in trying to be in compliance with the open meeting law. We're all well aware of it. How many times have we said, for example, can we go such and such? And the question is, is that going to violate the open meeting law? You devote the, when you and I went on the town boat to get, find out what the Hobbie Master does, and to get an understanding of what he needs, we didn't violate anything. We got information, we didn't discuss it, we came back and talked to the board. So I'm glad it came out this way, and certainly having a committee, we don't have executive sessions, but obviously, the Stormlight Committee, we're very careful about even discussing people in open session, because obviously, we can't do that either. But anyhow, I'll be glad to look at it.
May I ask a question? Yeah, I just, I don't remember this complaint also. I do remember other complaints that Mr. Higgins has filed, but I don't remember this particular complaint, so.
My only question is, I'm not disputing that Selectmen Gulat was on the board and had been working on minutes, but they're not on the board now. So I guess my question is, since this document is not technically a public document, the executive session minutes, is that allowed for a non-board member to review?
That complaint is against the Board of Selectmen at the time the event took place.
Can we check with town council first?
If in fact, to go a step further, which I'm glad they didn't, if in fact there were a serious violation, they would levy fines, and they would be levying against the three selectmen who were present that night, and the three selectmen would have to pay those fines out of their own pockets. Town of Dyton would not pay them. So that's something else that we, I think we've always kept in mind, that if there is a violation that is found to be truly a violation, and fines are issued, it's the individual selectmen, or board members who were accused of the violation that would have to pay it, okay? So Mr. Hull was not here, okay? Mr. Hull.
What do you mean, he's not going to have to pay now?
So.
I thought he would be paid.
After I.
He said, I don't, I have no clue.
After I have a chance to look at it, I will send it back to the chairman. He can share it with the board. The existing board will have to vote to release the sections that were referred to as okay to release by the A G.
So do you still think we ought to check with the town council on that?
I don't think it hurts to check. I'm not an expert, that's why I'm saying that. I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying. I just, I think it could raise another issue, like if we, like what's, I understand what she's saying, and she was a former board member, and like, she's in those minutes, but like, what's stopping us from giving it to anybody at that point? Do you know what I mean? That's not a board member. I don't know. I just would feel more comfortable.
And I will just say to you, the minutes that I have been asked to review go back a number of years, and again, to help Mrs. Brady to figure out what is the best way to go, and what is the best information or recommendation to give to the board, that's what I've done, okay? So if you are going to act on those, you need to know that if there ones I reviewed, I have marked on them, and she knows exactly which ones that I said, you can release these, and I wrote, don't release, and the reason for it. So I just let you know that, too, okay? I can also tell you, I had an open meeting law violation filed against me after I left the Board of Selectmen.
Just now?
The first time. Okay.
Let's see the patent here, don't you? She leaves the board again.
Not lately, because the individual who would normally file that moved away, literally. I had one filed on me when I left office sometime in 2010. And I contacted town council and said, why am I not aware of all of this? And he said, I've been waiting for you. I says, not only will I write you the narrative of what happened that night, I will draft a letter to, at the time, it was the local district attorney, it was the A G. And I said, I will even draft a letter to the district attorney, which I hope you will consider putting on your letterhead and send it, because it explains the whole thing. And there was no further action. It was explained to the person filed a complaint, and that was the end of it, okay?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not opposed to us checking to see if legal counsel takes, is appropriate. I suspect he's going to say it's okay. She was involved in those meetings. I've always felt a little uncomfortable as the board knows, Mr. Hull doesn't know yet, but when I've had to vote on executive board minutes that I wasn't even a participant, I wasn't a member of the board, and you're going to be dealing with that in the future. So I think it's a good idea to have, she was an active member of the Board of Selectmen, this is a complaint. This particular one is a complaint against the Board of Selectmen at that time. So I, I think it's going to be okay. Let's just get some clarification, so we make sure we're not making any, causing any problems.
The more fines that will come down, you want to know who's going to have to pay them.
Well, and that's my main concern. I mean, they did say they're dropping it, so, meaning no further action.
No further action, but they, they want to make sure that we're not going to have a patent here of doing this in the future.
It's a warning. It's slap on the hand, and it's a warning, okay?
Yep, and they just want us.
Only two complaints will be absorbed by Mr. Hull.
That is correct, all, all three portions. Just so the public is aware, basically, what there's, what, what the Attorney General's office is saying is that we want you to post the minutes that show that you discussed an executive session, just a general update on the process of the performance evaluation.
Just a section.
Correct.
Not all the minutes.
Correct. So just that discussion, and that is what we will review and get posted as soon as we possibly can.
That's what I just read, yep. The next agenda item is Selectmen's reports and comments. Give an update on the Selectmen's retreat. We had a retreat in this building here this past Saturday, July 10th. It was lasted between 10:00 and maybe 12:30. The Board of Selectmen and Ms. Brady was here, as well as our town administrator, and we discussed many, many issues. The part that I will just talk about, anybody, obviously, you were there, so if you want to add to this, is the special town meeting article brainstorming and planning. So we discuss several articles that will be going on the special town meeting. The Dog Kennel Bylaw, which would be from the Board of Health, the Trails Committee feasibility study. This was postponed from our annual town meeting to the special town meeting. The Brook Street Solar Pilot, which I understand is very close, if not completed, at this time. Speed Zone Bylaw, Opera Funding, Infrastructure, Public Health and Safety. This is the American Rescue Plan. We discuss the needs of the town and how we can utilize these funds. Library Building Study Committee, we may be coming up with that committee. And the other thing was, we discussed at some length, coming up with a flag policy. As I mentioned at this meeting, I had an opportunity to speak to town council, and I've asked him to look into a flag policy that other towns may have, and what the state has for a flag policy, so that we don't end up getting sued. And what we talked about was, once we get the flag policy from the town council, we'll make a decision on it. We'll then have a public hearing to get input from the, from the residents, the public regarding the flag policy. Then we'll vote, hopefully, to put it on the warrant, and then it'll be on the warrant at the special town meeting, and the residents of Dyton can vote on the flag, flag policy one way or the other. So I just want to let the, and we also discussed our.
Did you mention, maybe you didn't, I'm sorry, I was trying to listen very closely.
Yes, I did mention.
Did you also mention that, and, so we did actually take a vote as a board, and we did mention that, yes, town council will be crafting it. We will have the public hearing, and then give people an opportunity to give their feedback, and possibly incorporate some of that into the final product.
Yes.
Just so people know that there, you know, we are listening to them.
And we had a healthy discussion about that. We had different ideas as far as that, but I think the resolution was a fair resolution for the residents, for the board. So I look forward to that public hearing and seeing what the town council comes, comes up with. Anybody else wish to add as to what happened at the retreat? We did go over our different five-year plans. I was with the Library and ADA Compliance for our town buildings. Mrs. Gulat was no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen, but my colleagues on the board took over her two items. Who took the highway, was it you?
I did.
You took the highway, and you took the fire station? And you reiterated the, your five-year plans and your items also. Anything else that?
No, I think that was good. I just wanted to state, just to be a little more specific, for the speed zone bylaw, that would be specifically for Pleasant Street, and related to the speed safety zone that the Selectmen had previously approved at a Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Is there any other Selectmen reports? If, if not, we'll go to new business. The first one is to ratify town account and employment contract with Janelle Vining. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we ratify the employment contract between the town of Dyton and Ms. Janelle Vining as approved, as previously approved in executive session with the amendments mentioned at that time.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? If not, all vote.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, point of order, have you actually appointed her yet? You got to appoint her before you approve a contract.
I think we did appoint her.
I don't know the name, so I don't, I'm just asking.
I thought we, yes, I thought we appointed her pending a contract negotiations. I thought that that's what, that's what we did. Thank you, Mrs. Gulat. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. The next item.
Before we move on, I just wanted to point out that any chance that, since I, we've been on the Board of Selectmen together, we have done our best to hire folks from Dyton, because who knows Dyton better than people who live here, right? It's a quirky little town. And I just wanted to say, I'm really happy that we appointed and have now ratified Ms. Vining's contract. I think, you know, she's from here, she has family here, and she's going to serve the town well and be here for, quite frankly, a long time, as long as she wants. So I think it's a good thing for the town, and I just wanted to highlight that and thank everyone.
And I think the town will realize that we made a very good choice on this, for Ms. Vining. The next agenda item is the Clerical Union Sick Leave Bank town employees. We received from Carrie Easter Day. Good afternoon, everyone. Once again, I am reaching out, seeking two interested nominated Clerical Union members who will be interested in serving on the committee. Under the current contract, the sick leave bank committee needs to be established, comprised of five members. Three members shall be appointed at the discretion of the union, and two shall be appointed at the discretion of the town. Please provide your interest by email. So.
But we can only appoint union members?
No, the, the union is going to appoint the three members, right? And then we're paying.
Yes, and then the town itself has the ability of it. I like, I, yeah, to appoint the town members. So there are going to be five members on the sick leave bank committee. The union will appoint three, the town will appoint two.
I don't recall ever appointing someone. Does anyone know who we appointed previously?
No, this is on the new contract, so we didn't have a sick bank before.
Okay, all right, that's why I don't remember.
So I'm going to ask that if it's my Board of Selectmen, that town administrator be as one of the members, and myself, since I was part of the negotiations for the Clerical Union.
No, just kidding.
Do you guys feel comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no issue. I was going to make a motion, if you are accepting them. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Mr. Michael Mullin, town administrator, and Chairman Ken Pacheco to serve on the sick leave bank as the town's committee, as the town's appointees.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
This is for the duration of this contract, right? Do you pick, like, new ones at the next one? Or is this it?
I can get back to you, like, and I can get back.
Yeah, it's not an important, you know, it's good for at least a year.
Yeah, no, I can find out.
Okay, thank you. No further questions online.
I was wondering, should we word it specifically by the individual or the position?
In what way?
That the two members that we appoint would be the town administrator, whoever it may be.
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
And the chairman of the board, whoever it may be, so that year after year, we wouldn't have to address it.
But then it'd always be the chairman. What if you didn't like the chairman?
Well, then it would be a new chairman. You know what I'm saying?
I just think we need some consistency, so I'm okay with what you had just mentioned earlier, that the contract, which is, it was 2020? It was, was it 2020, I think it was approved?
I believe it was.
So in 2023, it will expire if we have an interest in, I may not have an interest or may not even be on the board at that point, but I think, because I was involved in this particular contract, I'm somewhat familiar with the sick bank. And also, as a state employee, I'm familiar with our sick bank that we had. I will, I don't think I would want to go further than the current contract.
Okay, understood.
If I'm no longer on the board, then you're going to have to appoint somebody anyway, so.
Correct. Okay, are you okay with keeping it the way it is?
As it was.
For the duration through this contract? Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The next agenda item on the new business is help agent benefit a time carryover request. Good afternoon, this was June 23rd. Good afternoon. After a discussion this morning with the town administrator, I am respectfully requesting to carry over an additional 14 hours of benefit of time, in addition to the 56 hours already requested, for a total of 70 hours. Your consideration in this matter would be greatly appreciated. What's the board's feeling on this?
I want to state for the record, I do know the background to this request, and I am extremely, extremely empathetic to the request. My personal opinion is, I'm feeling a little bit conflicted, because any time that the board makes a decision that's just for one individual or one position, after we made a blanket that we're going to let, you know, we're not, we're only going to do two weeks of carryover, or, or whatever the CBA says is what goes, I just feel like, when we steer from that and make an exception, you know, it tends to stir up the sand on the bottom of the lake, if you will. And so I am hesitant to approve it for that reason. And it has nothing to do, again, with, with the individual making the request.
I guess the only comment that I would make is.
And I know Selectmen Hull also had.
Oh, I see. But let me just finish this. So he normally would be working 28 hours a week, so he's able to carry 56, 56 hours over to the next fiscal year. But as we all know, he's been working a lot more hours. Most of our employees, well, not most, many of our employees work 35 hours a week, which would mean that he would be able to, if he had 35 hours, he'd be able to carry over 70 hours. So I guess, given the unique situation, and we had the pandemic here, as well as the administrator, put in a lot of hours, and I would not be opposed to carrying over. I understand your concern.
You're the chair, they're, these, the angry people are coming to your.
That's fine. Yeah, so I would not necessarily oppose this. Selectmen Hull.
Mr. Mullin? What is your recommendation?
To be honest with you, I, I see like a lot of logic with Chair Pacheco's sentiments about the fact that for the majority of the last year, the health agent has worked at 35 hours. I can, if he was, I can, if he actually worked, and if he was on the books, so to speak, for working that, he would have been able to carry over. So if he, if he's on the books, if he was on the books for working actually 35 hours a week rather than 28 hours a week, like, everything would be awash anyhow. I also know, Alec, and I als, like, I also agree completely with Dr. Z that all of us have worked hard, especially this year, to level set exactly what the expectation would be. And we worked hard at that, and there were a lot of, frankly, difficult conversations that we had to have at that end, which we had. But I mean, I do know at the end of, like, for the month of June, the health agent was, like, actually working and making a very diligent effort to use his time.
I know.
And, oh, oh, but he also had a number of inspections that were tied to financing, like, in lending and mortgages that were outstanding, where, where in order for residents to be able to satisfy. where in order for residents to be able to satisfy the terms, like, of their financing and lending, at the very end of the month, at the very end of the month of June, he was out straight doing inspections to help our residents really satisfy the terms, like, of their obligations as well. And to those, Alec, and I think even though we have been working, actually, very hard at holding the line, like, I think the extended circumstances to, you know, actually, everything at the end of June, Alec, can also align and also along with the fact that realistically and practically for the, oh, you know, for the better part, like, of of a fiscal year twenty-one, he was essentially working thirty-five hours a week. I I would recommend approval, but.
And I just before before the my comments probably led everyone to believe that I was going to vote no. I never stated how I was voting. I was just letting everyone know I understand and I really feel, I know he was actually attempting to take a vacation in June. That obviously never happened because I ended up having a conversation with the office manager. He was still there, and I said, isn't he on vacation? So I'm fully aware and I'm fully open, and I wanted to thank my colleague Selectman Pacheco. I didn't think of it that way. I didn't think of it that from the perspective of twenty-eight hours on paper, but really, in actuality, they had been working thirty-five and really more than thirty-five, let's be honest. So, my my mind's not made up.
I'm going to mention a point, and I may be off base, so please help me. During the month of June, this individual also took on an extremely, extremely important role working and representing stormwater in negotiations with the Conservation Commission on the issue of Dura Estates. We've talked about this from the perspective of the Board of Health, but those hours and the negotiations and the inspections and all the additional time that he put in, which with current negotiations still going on, have been crucial to the cause of Dyton on the water, on the issue of storm stormwater. And I'm quite confident that former Selectman Goulat would also agree. These were duties that were above and beyond his role as a health agent. I didn't hear that in earlier discussion, but based on what I know that he did, I would be in favor of this request.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion.
And I will accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the request from our health agent to carry over a total of seventy hours into fiscal year, of vacation, excuse me, into fiscal year twenty-two.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those. Mrs. Goulat?
If Selectman Hull had not mentioned the latest event that erupted, another one of those planned things that just popped up that we had to deal with and we're still dealing with. I had a long discussion with him, and I said, I need you, you're the only one that can do what needs to be done. You've got to review the plans, you've got to do the response and everything else because it's somebody with his education and background and a certification because he's the only one we have in the employment of the town that I'm aware of, and he's on stormwater, could go through the plans and show where, let's say, corrections, adjustments, refinements had to be made. And the other thing too is, I said, and you know what, I don't want to hear about three hours. I know you're three hours a week stormwater. Spend the amount of time you need on this project regardless because we need you, the only person that can do this. And he spent the time, I mean, you know, we turned in reports that were about this thick because he not only listed all of the conditions that need adjustment, he cited the handbook that clearly supported the position of the town of Dyton. As Mr. Hull said, we're not finished yet. Hopefully, we're going to get this resolved. But the work he did in preparation for the June meeting led us to a continuance because our initial visit in May, it sounded like it was all going to get resolved at the June meeting. And then when they saw the kind of work that had presented and the other the developers, I'll call them the engineer, looked at what Mr. what our individual had put together, that's when he also said, we need a continuance because he was not prepared to deal with all the work and the factual data that had been collected to support the town's position. So I certainly agree with what Mr. Hull has said. And as I said, I did speak to the individual and say, I need you to do that. I don't care how many hours you put in. I don't want to hear about three hours stormwater. I need you to do it, and he did it. So I I would certainly agree with with the board with what you're proposing.
And again, I'm I'm going to support this because at the end of the day, I know this individual did have, in fact, a vacation plan. They did make a good faith effort to use their time. And because of extenuating circumstance related to their role and some where they had to go above and beyond, they couldn't use it. And I think that that's, someone shouldn't be penalized for being a good employee, so I'm going to support it.
Is there any further discussion?
No, not for me.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Next item on the new business is the point Murdo Santos, excuse me, Mary Hathaway to Capitol Outlay Committee with expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Mary Hathaway to the Capitol Outlay Committee for a five-year term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, effective
July fourteenth.
It really should be July first, but July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is another one of those that are from the bylaw. So she has to be on it.
Yep.
By name, yes. I'm sorry, by position.
By title, yeah.
She can retire either.
Correct, that is correct. That is absolutely binding.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next item on the new business is the point Murdo Santos as the town historian. I guess we missed her on the appointments.
How did we miss her, huh?
I know. But there's a few of us that sort of listen. I didn't.
Okay, well, good catch.
Yes, whoever.
Did she, did she bring this to our attention? Tell me the truth. Did you catch her or did she?
I didn't catch her. No, I don't want to take any credit for this. I'm glad somebody caught it.
Me too.
I'm not sure if she was the one that caught it, but somebody caught it. And it's, this is for a one-year term, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I motion that we appoint Murdo Santos as our town historian for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next item is we received a letter from our town clerk, Mark Pacheco, in a state of June thirtieth regarding a board and committee appointments. As the new town clerk, I see everything very fresh, as most things are new to me. I am questioning everything and therefore have many ideas. As you know, right now, right now, it's appointment time for board and committee committees. And I recently investigated yearly selectman appointment terms. My office has a small part of this process, including swearing in all newly appointed board and committee members, as well as providing them with the open meeting law, conflict of interest training, and accept resignations. I thought it would be nice to have all the appointments last two years. It may be nicer self for working individuals to only have to be sworn in once every two years. There's less time out of office and for them as opposed to coming in each year. It will also save resources, less mailing, less paperwork, and less time in your meetings discussing appointments. Many towns do three-year terms. I like two years, as I believe it is less of a time commitment to individuals, and three years may seem like too long to commit. Other than specific entities, council on aging, Capitol Outlay Committee, Community Preservation Committees, I do not see terms specified in the bylaws. I am simply asking this as an agenda and speak about and spoken about for implementation in the future, should it be an idea you also like. It is not something you think is feasible. I am happy, if you, if it is not something you think is feasible, I am happy to discuss it. To aid in the background, I reached out to others around the clerks to learn what they do. I have included many letters as evidence of their employment. So my comment about this, and I've spoken to the town clerk about this, is that if we if we do two-year appointments, then every two years, we're going to have the whole list to do again. I suggested that we do for the first, next June, when we do appointments, maybe half of them for two years, half of them for one year, and then after that, everybody will be on a two-year cycle. Otherwise, every two years, we're going to have that long meeting that we have. He's going to have the same problem with swearing in two hundred residents or about two hundred residents for different boards and committees. So what's the thought of the board?
I totally understand what you're saying, but I think what he's trying, and I don't, you know, I trust your conversation, Pacheco to Pacheco, was productive.
We're brothers, but not related. We're brothers.
I think what he's trying to say is, yes, you'll never get away from having that long list, but it's just better to do it. It's, let me back up. It's like, do you remember, when you joined the board, were we still having the weekly meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
And shortly after that, and we all had our individual desk, if you remember, that went too by the board.
Absolutely. And our rationale for that, thankfully, that came from our executive team who said, we're like always, and it came from town administrator Aaronstein as well. She said, yeah, I'm watching us. We're always in a meeting cycle. We don't have time to do anything else because there's a meeting every week. And I think what he's trying to convey is he's always in an appointment cycle. So he's just saying, if we do it two years, you're never going to have that list be shorter because we just, we have these positions and they're, you know, normally you create more. You don't, you know, eliminate that many. But he's just saying, at least you kind of defray it, so it's every other year that you have to do that burdensome task.
Could get confusing if you stagger it.
That's the other thing. The agr, look what happened with the Agricultural Commission. It gets confusing because the way that that bylaw was written, it staggers it in the actual bylaw by position. And so, yeah, it's tough to keep track of. I agree with him that, what I agree with the town clerk is, it has to be like, everyone is this. Everyone is two years. Because we'll easily lose track of someone that's on like an off year. It's very tough to keep track of that. It really is. But I do get what you're saying. I think we just need to make a decision.
Everybody would eventually be on two years. It's just that for the next year, we would appoint half for two years and half for one year. And then after that, when those one year come up, we'd be appointing them for two years, but it doesn't.
How would we even do this now, though? I feel like, can we ask him to come in? Is that possible? And he can really, or maybe you spoke to him. What did he say? We already appointed people for one year.
Yeah, so that would stay the same. So next June, when we all get together, we would be appointing all those two hundred people that we appointed for two years.
It's for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's a good idea because if someone doesn't like want to do the full two years, you know, people move all the time and have to resign. I mean, you're not going to hold up your life because you're, no offense, an open space committee member, and you you have this two-year appointment. You're going to, you're going to resign. You know, it is what it is. And I, but I think it does save a little bit of time in terms of the work.
You know, he's.
And chasing people to get sworn in, I think, is a lot of work, too.
I think was, his concept is a great idea. He's looking at the big picture, you know, how his workers have to, you know, how hard they have to work and everything else. And this is going to ease some of the burden for his department. I think it's, I think it's great that he brought this to our attention.
Absolutely. Do, does he, is he asking us to?
I think he wants us to take some action on it.
Does he?
Well, it's on here to review, discuss, and act. And he's asking for us to consider it. Doesn't mean we have to do it tonight, but I, since we're here and we've had our conversation about it, might, would be nice just to probably wrap this up so that in two weeks from now, we don't have to put on the agenda again, and maybe we'll have to stop meeting weekly again, just to cover some of this stuff, so.
Let's get it done. I support it. I do actually support it. I think it's a good idea. I think he has been, he is, he did exactly what I did when I was elected Selectman. You remember, I took notes. I talked to people who knew more than me, and I learned. And I think he's doing the same thing. He's just like observing the operations. Hey, how can we make things more sound and and, you know? I think that's great. He's streamlining things. So I'm going to support this, Mr. Chairman.
So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, I guess, the town clerk's request to have the following, to have all committees except for Council on Aging, Capitol Outlay Committee, Community Preservation Committee, and the Agricultural Commission follow a two-year appointment term starting in June of, I'm sorry, July of twenty twenty.
July first, July first, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, that is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
We will, I think we still have to, we're still going to have to go through that list and and like appoint them for two years.
Yeah, in June, and then after that, it's going to be two years after that.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
Welcome. The next item is a, it's from Highway Supervisor Tom Ferry, dated June twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, regarding a donation to the Highway Department to the Board of Selectmen. Please be advised that we were offered a wood planer for Dyton Lee Holworth High School from their surplus. We would like to add this item to our arsenal for our carpentry use. If you have any questions, please let me know. I was kind of hoping he would be here because I wanted to know if this was an electric planer. I have a collection of hand planers, eighteen, nineteenth-century hand planers and some twentieth-century. I suspect it's one of the electric ones. So, well, do we need to vote on this to accept it, Mr. Administrator, town administrator?
Yeah, I would vote to accept, Mr. Chairman.
I see you shaking. I always see you when you're not here on my shoulder, like, guiding me which way is the right way. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation from the Dyton Millworth Regional High School of a wood planer to be procured by the Highway Department.
Second.
Is there a second? I just want to add, as we know, the Highway Department's done a lot of great work in this building here, downstairs and next door. And this is probably really going to help them do some of their their work, so. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. There you go, Mr. Ferry.
Good work.
The next item is review, discuss, and act on a Board of Health transfer request. The Board of Health is requesting a transfer of a hundred and sixty dollars from the Professional and Technical to the Board of Health landfill trash.
Bulky.
Bulky, is that what it says? For a hundred and sixty dollars, and the cost of equipment exceeded our estimate. And this is signed by Mr. Pies, Tom Pies, as well as our Assistant Town Accountant. I will entertain a motion for this transfer.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the end-of-year budget transfer request form from the Board of Health from in the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars from the account ending five-three-zero-zero into the account ending five-three-zero-two, as listed on the form.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Last night, we voted, we voted on several transfers, or at least FinCom voted on several transfers. This wasn't included in the list?
This was included, but the only thing, so the FinCom Act, the FinCom on this one became, because it came after the June twenty-third meeting, the FinCom actually voted first.
Okay.
Now it's coming to the Board of Selectmen.
So it has been approved by?
It has been approved. So we're all done with transfers, and we met the deadline actually, actually of July fifteenth to have all of our transfers done.
Thank you. You had a question?
It's not a question. I just wanted to highlight and thank the Board of Health. I think they did an excellent job this year anticipating increases to trash, pickup, recycling. I know we had a big, and it, we couldn't avoid it last year, but we had a big year-end transfer for that. And I just, I think they did a superb job in anticipating the increase in those costs this year. We didn't have any of those big transfers to consider before, so I did want to give them a big kudos on that.
Any discussion? Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Correspondents, we received a letter dated July 1st, 2021. Dear Mr. Pacico, Dr. Sograffis, and Mr. Hull, please accept my resignation from the Cannabis Policy Advisory Committee effective immediately. My work schedule and professional obligations do not provide me with the adequate time to participate in any evening meetings. Moving forward, I hope the town of Dyton capitalizes on expanding legal cannabis industry. Regards, Kathy Spencer. I know that when I was on that commission, she was very helpful, very knowledgeable on that commission, so she's going to be a terrible loss. And I know that you are the Board of Selectmen's representative for that task force also. And I'm sure you're going to miss it, too.
Absolutely. Still know where she lives, though.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I motion that we accept with thanks and appreciation the resignation, excuse me, letter of Kathleen Spencer from the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Also, in the correspondence, we received a letter from Jocelyn Tavarez. Dear Jonathan and Ken, I spoke to Jonathan a few weeks ago with about the likelihood I would need to resign from the commission because of the upcoming workload the library will be facing. I am so sorry it is happening at a time when another member also needs to step away. I thought the cleanest way to do this was to resign on June 30th. I appreciate the opportunity I was given to serve the commission, and I learned so much this past year. I know my education with disability rights, needs, and responsibilities is only beginning, and I welcome the chance to be an ally and an advocate. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help continue or support the work of the commission in any way. Jocelyn Tavarez, who happens to be at Dyton Public Library. So we're going to miss her. I've been on the commission since it was, as a liaison for the Board of Selectmen since day one. She's been very helpful. She was the person responsible for minutes, but she's also very helpful on other things. She worked on the mail that we're going to be mailing out soon. So she will be missed. We are short a couple of members, so anybody's interested in joining the Commission on Disability, we definitely would appreciate it.
Do you still have a quorum?
That's a good question. I think we do.
There's still three there.
Did we already highlight them? Have they been in the spotlight? We may want to do them next.
Yes.
We can get some more members, selectmen.
We, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and I will mention that.
Thank you.
I, I do have several questions in regards to this position. This board. Five-member board?
Is it a five-member or a seven-member?
I think it's seven. It is?
I think it could be seven.
I think it is.
I'm not a voting member, but I kind of think it's seven.
Seven members. So how many are they down?
We're down a few. I...
I'll look online while selectman Hall is...
I want to say we got three members.
This is my...
I think they're down three.
Jim and as Jonathan, as is Ms. Mello.
Ms. Mello.
And then Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
So you're down to three?
Down to three.
So you need one more.
At least one more. So I know, I looked at the agenda, trying to think if, well, we won't be able to vote on minutes or anything else, quite frankly, but we, a lot of these times we have discussions, so we'll be able, still to meet tomorrow night and have discussions, but we won't be able to, to vote.
Yeah.
Could, could we post that on...
It's five members.
It's five?
It's five members?
It's five plus you as the liaison.
Oh, good.
So we have a...
So you have three, so you do.
You barely have a quorum, just like the open space committee.
Yeah. A lot of committees that are getting down to just the...
Could we post that on the webpage?
Absolutely.
And try to...
We can highlight especially the ones that are, barely have a quorum. Because if someone catches a cold and you can't have a meeting for a month, you know? It's tough. It really is.
Or if you have important business you have to get done, you can't...
Maybe on a monthly basis, we ought to post on our website, Facebook page, the list of those committees that are short members and the method as to how they can join those commissions and committees. That might be helpful. I'm not saying we do it all the time, but just on a monthly basis, and we'll update it each, each month. I know we used to read those, the lists, if you remember. They were very long, and that's why I think we get away from that. But we used to read the list. I'm not sure if you were already on the board. We used to read the, the list of the different committees and the number of members that they need. We may have to do that in the future, but maybe just on the social media page as well as the website, we should point out the different committees and the number of members that they need. I was just seeking.
Or at least under announcements, we could just mention like where someone will go on the webpage to see where the vacancies are. Because right on that page, you can click to apply. It's all electronic, very easy. And just guide people to where they can see what's available, and they'll know to click and apply if, if it's something that piques their interest.
So Kara, so maybe on the next meeting on the 28th, we can put that on the agenda. And Dr. Z will, since he's the website expert, he can give the public...
I'll get you like the, like, yeah, exactly. The directory on like which, where you click to get to where the vacancies are, so people will know. And then we could just paste it every, we can just have it there forever.
And people can also come into the Board of Selectmen's office and fill out an application, too.
And that's on the website as well, it lets people know.
Just those that aren't internet savvy, savvy.
I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Regarding the ADA commission, they're a commission, correct? Not a committee?
Commission on Disabilities.
Yes.
Yes.
So they, are any of their actions such that will affect developers or businesses that are trying to come into the town or get approval through the permitting process? Or is that mostly Jonathan?
They're mostly a recommending body. So please know when I answer you nuanced, I'm not being like, like skirting the issue. Can their recommendations have something to do with development? Yes, of course, because they'll make recommendations on things like engineering plans for different projects. Like, maybe we should put this here. Do they have a direct effect on whether something gets a permit or not? No, they don't. But, you know, if, I'll give you an example. If something wasn't built to code and, you know, the COD goes there and Mr. Gale in his capacity as the COD coordinator goes there and says, this isn't disabled accessible, maybe the building commissioner won't grant the permit. But it's not, so I'm trying to say it's not their job to say no. But, you know, if you have that partnership between the COD and the building inspector, which is all what we hope to have, that I would think they would coordinate, you know, and have that professional relationship to inform each other of those types of things. Although Jim is also in his own right an expert as well.
So, yeah, but you're talking about the ADA coordinator position interacting with the building commission, not the committee per se, the committee...
Well, no, no, the ADA interacting with the commission. When Jonathan has a problem with something, does he address it individually? Or does he give it to the commission and then the commission brings it?
That's a Ken question.
Yeah, I, I think he acts on it individually, but he will probably bring it to the commission on disability. For example, we're talking about a module for the library. I'm sure he's going to get, get the look at it and make sure that the ramp is appropriate and the bathroom is handicap accessible and that kind of stuff. If there's a problem with it, he may bring it back to the, the commission. But I'm sure before he even brings it back to the commission, he's going to be contacting other people regarding that, so.
So he can act individually or with the commission?
Yes, he can cease and desist and that kind of stuff. But he can have strong recommendations as to what needs to be done. I mean, he's minimum ADA complacency, and then he's the better ADA complacency. So in this town here, we're trying to do what's better for the residents. For example, we, we don't have an elevator at the old, at Town Hall. We should have an elevator at Town Hall because there are people that need to go from the basement or the first floor to the second floor. We do take into consideration if somebody has, and I've done it myself. I've gone down to the basement, the first floor. They get somebody's tax bill to bring it up to the second floor, but they shouldn't have to go through that. So that's, we're complying with everything, but we should do better than that. And the elevator is a little bit down the road, but we need to seek grants and that kind of stuff for an elevator.
I also wanted to, and I don't know if this answers your question, selectman Hall, but just like the Development and Industrial Commission is something that's created by state Massachusetts general law, I believe the ADA commission also is something that falls under specific state guidelines. And so their role is, is outlined in that way. But also ADA coordinate, Mr. Gale, in his role as ADA coordinator, I believe also has certain, I don't want to say rights, but like duties and responsibilities under mass general law and, and different titles and all that, so.
Thank you for the heads up about the IDC, too.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And I will get you the information on which general law. Ms. Vicky Piazza, when she was the chair, brought it to my attention. Like, it outlines exactly the roles and responsibilities. So it's like very clear what the commission's charges.
Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay. Any acknowledgements? Say no.
Just Mrs. Brady for being patient.
Do we have to? Did we vote on her?
Did we?
On who?
Jocelyn's resignation.
Jocelyn, okay.
We did vote? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to my attention.
With thanks and appreciation, I hope.
Because I still remember whether or not we...
I don't think you did roll call, though.
Oh, we didn't?
Let's do roll call.
We didn't vote on Jocelyn?
I think it was motioned and seconded, and I think that was the world's longest discussion.
Under discussion.
Well, we really got a commission on disability? How do we, oh, okay. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept or review the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of May 12th, 2021, June 16th, 2021, and June 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of June 9th, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the warrants. I believe you have the warrants, Selector Hall.
Ooh, the changing of the guard.